Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for coming. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Let me do it this way. Is that better? Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for coming. As I'm sure you know, this is a town hall for the purpose of discussing the water quality, the quality of water in our water supply. We have two main objectives for the meeting tonight. The first is to provide you with the most current and up-to-date information that we have up to today. We have our consultant team from CHA here. They should be able to cover everything that we know up until this point. The second objective for the meeting then is to solicit public comments, questions, and feedback. You will be permitted to ask questions. We will go long enough for everybody who's here, who wishes to speak, will be given an opportunity to speak. We will go in several rounds, which in a moment, our senior executive assistant will explain how the conduct of the meeting will flow. But everybody will be afforded an opportunity to make comments, to ask questions. And then, once everybody that wants to speak has had an opportunity to speak, we will then open it up for additional questions. So if you have follow-up questions that you didn't quite get the answer to, you'll be able to come back up and speak again. So that's how the format will go, and Ms. Barlow will explain that in detail. Prior to starting, a few housekeeping things. For those of you who may not be familiar with this building, the restrooms are in the very back, in that corner. We will have breaks in between the rounds. There'll be short breaks. However, if you need to use the restroom, this is entirely up to you, but I would suggest that you get up and use the restroom rather than wait for the breaks, because there's 175 people in here who're gonna wanna use the same restroom at the same time. So I think you get my drift. So it's not considered impolite if you need to use the restroom or step out to take a phone call. We completely understand. Don't hesitate to do that. We are, this is obviously a public meeting. We do have our city clerk here who is keeping minutes of the meeting. And therefore, just like our city council meetings, it's very important that we have one speaker at a time, so that we can keep the record clean. And so the one speaker at a time will be speaking from that microphone when their name is on the record and what they say will be recorded. So with that being said, this is much more relaxed in a normal council meeting, because you get to ask a lot of questions. But we need one speaker at a time, please, so we can keep the record straight, which means that you can't shout questions from your seat or heckle the speaker or anything like that. Please don't do that, because we wanna be respectful. Everybody in here are friends and neighbors, so we wanna be respectful to our neighbors. So please, no yelling from the seats or no heckling or anything like that. But if you, like I said, if you ask a question and you don't think they really hit the nucleus of the question, you can come back up in the next round and ask for clarification. So we will go until everybody's had their questions answered, as well as we can answer them. Now, keep in mind that we will tell you everything we know at this time. There may be some questions that we just don't know the answers to yet. I say that because on the request-to-speak forms, there's a place where you're asked to put your email address. Now, you don't have to do that if you don't want to. If you wanna speak and you don't want us to have your email, that's fine. But if you put your email address, that'll enable us to say, well, they asked about something that we didn't know the complete answer to, and maybe we can touch base with you when we learn the full answer. So that's entirely up to you, but there is a benefit to putting your email address. Okay? Did I cover everything? Okay, Mrs. Barlow, why don't you explain to everybody how this will go?
Good evening. Is this working? Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, really close.
Hello? Can everybody hear me? Hi, I'm Ginny Barlow. I work in the city manager's office. Welcome, everybody. Like the mayor said, everybody's gonna get an opportunity to speak. All we ask is that you fill out the speaker, request-to-speak forms, so that we have your name for the record. What we're gonna do is, I'm gonna call everybody in groups of five. So the first five I will call, and we have on-deck seats here. So if the five people I call come sit in on these chairs here, then, one at a time, you can get up and, um, questions or comments. You will have up to five minutes. You're welcome to use the entire five minutes if you'd like. We have the, um, the colors are up there. When you have 30 seconds left, the yellow will blink. And then, at five minutes, there'll be a very annoying buzzer sound, so. You will all have an opportunity to ask questions. If you're not in the first round, we will take a break. You will have time to fill out your forms and leave them with Mary back here. She's collecting more forms. So if you come up with a question that you haven't heard and you would like to ask it, just fill out a form, and we will call your name, and everybody's gonna ask their questions, and everybody will have an opportunity to speak. So with that being said, I would like to, in the, there in the council, to please come up in the front row, because we're having the presentation. And after the presentation, then you can go back to your place at the dais. So after you ask the questions, if you would generally return to your seat, so the next person can come up to speak. It'd greatly appreciate it. We have seats in the front. Yes, these are just for the presentation. When the questions start, then you're welcome to come up and take these seats if you would like. Okay, that being said, city manager Carlos Baia will start off.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you all for being here this evening. So we have three presentations for you. First one will be mine, more of an overview of where we are in the context of the issue of PFAS. Following myself will be the representatives from CHA. They'll be talking about what they're planning to do. And then, we will also have our city attorney, Ernie Mueller, talk about the litigation that we're involved with regarding PFAS. So let me start about what is PFAS. So we've heard a lot talked about this, and PFAS is a broad term for a class of thousands of different chemicals characterized by strong carbon-fluorine bonds. And this evening, you're gonna hear us talk specifically a lot about PFOS and PFOA. Those are two of the more common types of PFAS, and those are the two that the EPA in recent announcements has said they're gonna be regulating in 2031. So we're gonna spend some time on that subject. Now, let's talk about the history of PFAS. So since the 1940s now, for several decades, companies such as 3M, Chemours, DuPont, and others have manufactured PFAS substances. And PFAS is found in, if you check your homes, you probably have PFAS in many, many places. You probably even have it on your clothes here today. PFAS is found in many products, including non-stick cookware, water repellent clothing, like raincoats or dry-wet clothes, stain-resistant fabrics and carpets, cosmetics, contact lenses, older firefighting foams, dental floss, fast-food containers, and products that resist grease, water, and oil of all varieties likely have PFAS. So PFAS can enter the environment as they are manufactured, as they're used, or after a product with PFAS is disposed of, for example, if it ends up in a landfill. Now, because it's been found that PFAS did not break down, they're widely present in soil, water, air, animals, and people around the world. In fact, there's one estimate that's been put out there by an entity called the Environmental Working Group that estimates that 99% of Americans have PFAS in their bodies. So it is a pervasive subject, a pervasive chemical. So recent court actions demonstrated that since the 1960s, chemical companies have known that PFAS chemicals are persistent in the environment, and they pose a risk to human health. Yet these companies continue to sell these chemicals without disclosing those risks. In terms of water utilities, so our water system, like most water utilities, if not all water utilities, we do not create PFAS chemicals. So that is not something we manufacture, not something we plan to add to any kind of water. And in Florida, the responsibility for enforcing the Federal Safe Drinking Water Act rests with the state, and Temple Terrace's water system meets all current Florida drinking water regulations. So I want that, folks, that to be clear. We meet all the current regulations that are in place today. Now, at the federal level, the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, and I apologize, there're gonna be some acronyms here. I'm gonna try to find those acronyms as I go, because I know it can be confusing, so I'll do my best with that. So the EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, the federal entity tasked with protecting and safeguarding this country's environment. Every five years, they issue something called an unregulated contaminant monitoring rule. Okay? Now, there's another acronym. It means UCMR. They've done this since the late 1990s. So every five years, they do this as a way to gather data about contaminants that might be in water that are not being regulated presently. So it's a way for them to get to do a fact-finding mission. They gather data from drinking water systems around the country, and then they use that data to come up potentially with new regulations or new health advisories. So back in 2013 to 2015, the EPA issued UCMR-3. And the three is just the sequence. So the first one back in the 90s was UCMR-1, and two, and three, et cetera. UCMR-3 required testing for PFAS chemicals. Temple Terrace, our water utility, we tested at the time based on the requirements for UCMR-3, and we tested for PFOS and PFOA, and we found that we were non-detect. In other words, we did not meet the minimum reporting levels that the EPA had set for UCMR-3 testing. So those minimum reporting levels back then, in 2013 to 2015, were 20 parts per trillion for PFOA and 40 parts per trillion for PFOS. And we were below those, so we were non-detect. Now, parts per trillion, this is another thing. You're gonna hear a lot about parts per trillion. I imagine the scientists can probably define this a lot better. But I've seen, and you've probably seen as well, if you've done any research on this, the best analogy, it's a part per trillion is the equivalent of a diluted, if you think of like a drop of ink, you dilute a drop of ink, and you drop it in the equivalent of 20 Olympic-sized swimming pools, that would be a part per trillion. So these are real small levels we're talking about here. So measuring them is quite a challenge. So back in 2013 to 2015, again, Temple Terrace, we were non-detect. So the EPA took that data from the UCMR-3, and they issued a health advisory in 2016. And that health advisory recommended, this was not enforceable, but they recommended to the country's drinking water systems that the maximum contaminant level for PFOA and PFOS should be 70 parts per trillion combined. Okay, and that was their governing recommendation since 2016 through the early 2020s. And of course, we were under that. Now, let's fast-forward. UCMR-5, so this is again the rule every five years, so UCMR-5. You may ask, what happened to UCMR-4? UCMR-4 did not test for PFAS. They recommended testing for other things, so I'm gonna reference UCMR-5, because that was the next time that the EPA asked drinking water systems to test for PFAS. So if you remember, in 2016, the EPA had said, hey, the recommended maximum is 70 parts per trillion combined. Under EPA's UCMR-5 testing, they've now changed that maximum contaminant level that they want tested for is now for PFOS and PFOA, is now set to four parts per trillion. Okay, so a pretty significant decrease. So Temple Terrace, we did testing, and our test results came, actually, displayed right here on the screen. So we have two water treatment facilities. You'll hear them referenced here this evening, White Way and Sunnydale. The White Way plant is the bigger of the two. We tested in March, and we tested in May as part of the UCMR-5. And what you see is, in March, for PFOA in White Way, we had 8.1. In May, 8.7. PFOS in May, excuse me, in March in White Way, 19.3, and in May, 18.8, parts per trillion. At the Sunnydale plant in March, we had 10. In May, 7.7. PFOS was 19.5 in March, and then 16.4 in May. We've also done additional testing of the water. So these numbers, they're right here on the screen that I just referenced, that a lot of the community's familiar with. So these numbers were at the point-of-entry. You'll hear that term, point-of-entry. What that means is the finished water coming out of the treatment plant. So they test at the finished water level. What we did on July 30th, thanks to the work of our consultant, CHA, is they actually tested, again, the point-of-entry, but they also tested each of our wells. So we have 10 active potable water-drinking wells. And those wells were all tested individually. And that'll be important as we go down the road, because it'll give us a clear indication if there's, what the PFAS levels are in each of those wells. So some wells may have very little or no PFAS, other wells may have more, and that can help us in terms of finding an appropriate treatment solution. And we're also gonna be doing additional quarterly testing into 2026, again, to determine the average level of PFAS, because again, that will dictate, all that information will help dictate the type of treatment that we need to do. So the UCMR-5, so the EPA is taking that data. In the midst of collecting that data, the EPA issued its first-ever enforceable maximum contaminant level for six PFAS compounds in drinking water. So what this means, when I say enforceable, it means they're proposing a regulation. Before, they were simply advisories and recommendations, and now they're saying, we're gonna propose a regulation. So the EPA is requiring drinking water systems like ours to complete initial monitoring by 2027, which I just mentioned we're doing right now, and to implement solutions to reduce PFAS levels that exceed the proposed maximum contaminant levels by the year 2029. I will tell you, the EPA, earlier this year, announced that they are proposing to postpone that enforcement. So postpone the start of the regulation until 2031. The reason for that largely, I would imagine, is due to the fact that this is a national, excuse me, challenge. We're gonna talk about that just shortly, so you understand the magnitude of this challenge across the country. The EPA also announced in May of 2025 that it will be repealing the proposed regulations for all but the PFOA and PFOS, hence the reason we're focusing on those two here this evening. Now, let's talk about the national challenge. So this is data that comes from the EPA's, actually, data sets, and also from Environmental Working Group, sort of accumulation of the data. So there are 9,323 public water systems in this country that have detected PFAS. The EPA estimates that 165 million Americans are served by water systems with detected PFAS. The EPA also estimates that up to 6,700 drinking water systems nationally have detected PFAS at levels that are higher than the proposed four parts per trillion future enforceable level. So we, Temple Terrace, we are in this number. We're one of 6,700 utilities. They're all in the same boat right now. We are above the four parts per trillion enforceable level for a regulation that will go into effect in 2031. This map on the Environmental Working Group's website, invite anyone to visit their website, it's an interactive map. And you can see here graphically the magnitude of this challenge. So if you look, you'll see that drinking water above the proposed limit. So these are utilities that are like us today, that would be above the proposed 2031 regulation today. They're in light blue, so you can see, this is light blue on my screen, but it turns out it looks a little bit like green, doesn't it, on yours? So it's the majority, it looks like the majority of the country, particularly the eastern seaboard and the state of Florida right now. So there is, this problem again is very, very pervasive across the country. So what are we doing? So we have engaged the services of CHA. There are water resources consultant. CHA was actually working already on a master plan for our water treatment facility, and we've asked them to take the regulatory component of their plan, focus it on PFAS, and accelerate it, so they can bring to the city council and the community potential treatment solutions early. And they're also gonna be talking about this evening, they'll be talking in more detail about this, but they'll also talk about not only permanent solutions, but potential interim solutions. We've also established a water questions page on the city's website. There's information there today. We will continue to add information. These presentations, we'll put these presentations on there as well over the next several days. We have also engaged the services of outside legal counsel to pursue compensation for the costs related to PFAS from the companies that produced it. And the city attorney will talk more in detail about this. But again, I wanna reiterate, the companies that produced this and knew that these had health concerns, those are the ones that right now are in the midst of litigation and settlements, and we are part of that process as well. We've also established a PFAS task force. And that task force, several of my staff were meeting every week, and where each person is also taking on different meetings. So we have met with our neighbors, because we wanna learn, what is everybody else doing? What situation are they in? So Tampa Bay Water, Tampa Bay Water is one of the larger water suppliers in this region. Tampa Bay Water provides water to six governments, Pinellas County, Pasco County, Hillsborough County, part of the city of Tampa's water supply, St. Petersburg, as well as Newport Beach. And we've met with them, and they also have PFAS that's above the levels that would be in effect in 2031. So they're looking at potential solutions as well. They haven't, they don't have solutions in place, just like we don't have solutions in place. They've got issues with some of their, some of their wells. They actually draw water from a variety of sources. So there's some groundwater they pull out, they have river water, they also have ocean water, they have a desalination plant. So they've got some issues with some of their groundwater and some of their river water. So they're looking at a filtration system, for example, just for their wells, that they told us will probably cost them right now, based on today's cost, $30 million. That doesn't count what they're gonna have to do for their river water. We also met with the city of Tampa, and they also have PFAS. And they're looking at a treatment solution for PFAS as well. The city of Tampa is looking at a system that they're testing as a pilot called a suspended ion exchange. This is, you'll hear ion exchange. These gentlemen will talk about ion exchange this evening. Suspended ion exchange is a technology, according to what the city of Tampa officials tells us, excuse me, that has not been used in the US, but they're looking at it potentially. And for the city of Tampa, they're estimating it'll cost them $190 to $200 million for that treatment solution. Hillsborough County, we've met with them as well, and again, they buy water from Tampa. So the reasons, the secondary reason for meeting with the city of Tampa in Hillsborough County is because we wanna look at, is there a potential to regionalize this? If we're all looking at treatment solutions, does that make sense? Can we connect our systems? Because if you connect your systems, because right now, our system in Temple Terrace is a standalone system. So if you remember, a few weeks ago, we probably got some alerts about our Sunnydale water treatment plant and the storage tank at the Sunnydale plant, we were making a repair to its foundation, so we took it offline. So that's a half-million gallon tank. Now, when we took that offline, the pressure for the entire system was, it was really hard to maintain, because a half-million gallons of water has now been kind of eliminated from the system temporarily. So actually, we thank you for your collaboration, your cooperation with that. You helped us maintain the pressures during that repair period. But if we were connected, for example, to the city of Tampa or to Hillsborough County, it could be just a matter of opening a valve and letting the water flow in to increase the volume, so during that repair period, for example. So at a basic level, just for an emergency, that makes a lot of sense. Secondly, again, from a treatment solution perspective, is there a way that we can partner, so that we can acquire perhaps part of our water from another source, if they're doing treatment, and we can use some of our wells differently to keep the PFAS levels below the EPA standards? So that's, those are things we're looking at right now. So the technical folks are working on treatment solution alternatives, and we're trying to figure out if there's any partnerships that would benefit the city as well and accomplish the same thing. And maybe it's a bit of both. We also met with the city of Pompano Beach staff. City of Pompano Beach is in Broward County in South Florida. We met with them, because South Florida, on the whole, their PFAS rates are higher than ours, and higher than most of this region. So we wanted to get an understanding of what they're doing there. We also met with Dr. Raj De Silva, who is a leading global expert on PFAS. Dr. De Silva is a Tampa resident as well. He volunteered to talk to our task force. Is Dr. De Silva here in the room? Oh, he's in the back. Okay, great, thank you. So Dr. Silver, he's actually here today. He was very helpful in educating our team about some of these challenges with PFAS. We've also met with Congresswoman Laura Lee's staff, and the reason we did that is because under the prior federal budget, there were dollars to assist utilities with some of these costs. The current budget does not have any money to assist utilities in terms of grants with these costs. We just wanted to raise the awareness of that issue with the Congresswoman's staff, so they listen to us, and I imagine that they'll be looking at this issue as it continues. We, of course, have been meeting with CHA, our consultant, and we also met with our utility, with a utility rate study consultant, because at the end of the day, if we get settlement dollars and we are able to get some grants hopefully at some point, there may still be a scenario where we, as a utility, have to issue a revenue bond or debt in order to pay the balance to do one of these treatment solutions. Again, the numbers we're talking are 20, 30, 40 million dollars or above potentially. So if we do that, we have to have a rate study done to understand how that'll be, impact the users' water rates. So that's something we wanted to learn, that process, and that's why we met with that particular person. So, and we'll continue to meet with people as we move forward and report back. Now, so we're leaving PFAS. I just wanna also just reiterate that we, on a daily basis, we test for other contaminants that are required under the state of Florida. We sample our city water system daily. Across the system, we do regular testing, and we provide that information on an annualized basis in our annual water quality report. And I wanna touch upon one issue that came up in the annual water quality report that I think is there some misinformation about or misinterpretation, so I just wanna clarify that. So I apologize for the abrupt nature of this question, but this is the way it was being presented, so I wanna make sure it's clear. So if you can't read it from the screen, it says, was the city's water contaminated with fecal matter in 2024? The answer is no, and let me explain why, where this comes from. In the water quality report, there was a reference to, so we, again, we sample the water every day. So there's a reference to three positive samples for total coliform. Total coliform, coliform is a family of bacteria. And under, subset of total coliform is E. coli. E. coli is a more precise indicator of contaminated water in terms of fecal matter. We never found E. coli. We never tested positive for E. coli, neither in primary tests or follow-up tests. There was no E. coli. So when we have a positive sample, we have to do follow-up sampling. We did follow-up sampling. Follow-up sampling did not show coliform. Now, I will tell you, and this is very candid, I apologize for this. One of the things that, when the staff did the follow-up testing, they did not follow the pattern to the T, the way that the Department of Health mandates. They did follow-up testing, but they didn't follow all the steps involved. So that's the reason why it was, there was a reference to it in the water quality report. The staff has been retrained, and in fact, to make sure that we had confidence in the system, we hired an independent third-party lab to actually sample the entire city, all the water across the entire city, and retest the water, and we did not show any coliform. So as far as we're concerned, that was a false positive. And so we just wanna make sure that that's clear for the public. And we placed 10 years of our water quality reports, the last 10 years, they're on our city's website. So you can go through, and you can see the history overall, and we have a very sound system. a very sound system. As I mentioned, the city's website, this is a screenshot of it here. We have a permanent water questions page now set up. There's a button on the main page, the homepage, you can see the arrow pointing to it, right here, for water questions, so I welcome you to check that out. We'll have more information, like I said, including these presentations on there and the remainder of this week. And you may leave here today, and you thought, oh geez, I missed the question, I really wish I'd asked that. So we have this QR code here, feel free to take a picture of the QR code, it'll, it'll take you to a quick little form, basically just your name and what your question is, and you can submit, submit that to us at a later date, and we will get answers to you. So I want to thank you again for your attention this evening, and I want to welcome up representatives
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, my name is Barton Jones. I'm a senior principal engineer for CHA, and I worked out of our Tampa office. I'm 80 years old, and I've been doing this for over 55 years. And I have been delegated by CHA to be your client service manager. What that means is, I am your advocate internally to CHA. I work with our execution teams to make certain that we perform as you have requested on the timeline that you have requested. Tell you a little bit about the firm. We're a national firm, we have over 2,000 staff scattered mostly along the east coast of the United States. CHA was established in 1952, and we're a full-service engineering firm. We have been in Florida for over 40 years, and in fact, we have over 250 staff located in seven offices throughout the state. I'll tell you a little bit more about our team's expertise in just a few months. I would like to introduce folks that are here tonight, and also some members that could not be here, but are directly involved in the team effort for the project execution. As I mentioned, I'm the client service manager. My young engineers look at me and say, you're, you're kind of like the State Farm insurance agent, or the farmer's insurance agent. You know a thing or two because you've seen a thing or two. Because I have been a consultant most of my career, I do have some public service experience. I was a director of utilities for Buke, Iowa, and I was an assistant chief engineer for the Spartanburg Water System in South Carolina. So I kind of have a sense for what's important to you as a consumer of water. With me tonight is Alan Defloff. Alan is our principal in charge, and he is the Florida team leader. Internally, let me tell you what that means to us. He is our regional manager that's responsible for the four offices that go across the I-4 corridor. He's got 23 years of experience, all in the Tampa Bay area. Our technical director is Dr. Shandra Misur. He is working as a nationally recognized expert in all things PFAS. So he will be directing our technical team. He's got over 40 years of experience in both planning, design, and operation. Ed Tauton is your project manager. Ed has over 36 years of experience, and his specialty is master plans. 36 years, Ed has practiced engineering in the state of Florida, focusing upon the development of master plans that look to make sure that your assets operate and maintain their function over the planning horizon, which in this case is normally 20 years. Let me tell you just a little bit about what we've done close by. And I have three examples. On the left, you'll see the city of Vero Beach. Right now, we are helping them understand their PFAS issue and what may transpire in how they can solve their issue to get below the MCL, the maximum contamination limit. We just recently finished a pilot study for the town of Bel Air. They are using a technology known as reverse osmosis to reduce the level of PFAS in their system. And we did the pilot study to determine what kind of pretreatment is necessary before we introduce the water to the reverse osmosis system. We're doing that so we can come up with a plan that is economical and optimal. That's the purpose of a pilot plan. And last but not least, there's a water treatment plant in Stanton, Delaware. That plant is operated by Viola. Viola engaged CHA to assist them in the design of a removal of PFAS from their water treatment plant at a scale of 30 million gallons a day. They have 42 pressure tanks, 12 feet in diameter. You will have nothing like that if you were to go with the same technology that Stanton uses. So that's briefly what CHA brings to the table. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ed Tauton, your project manager, and Ed will walk you through the process. What have we done? What will we do? And the timelines to help you understand and appreciate that we're in it with you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bart. All right. First off, I'd like to applaud you guys for coming tonight and watching on TV, because it's people like you that are going to make changes in this world. We need to turn this around, what's going on. All right, I want to add to what Bart said, is we have been local in Florida, and we have full-scale plants operating that are using the same processes that remove PFAS, right? We have full-scale plants in the city of Orlando, Seminole County, city of Castleberry, Polk County is state-of-the-art. We've, we've got a lot of facilities that are up and operating using the same processes that, that we'll be using to remove PFAS. Just to clarify, our role, CHA's role with the city, is, number one, we do want to complete the master plan, because we need the water plants to operate another 20 to 30 to 40 years, right? Things, as they age, they need repair and replacements, that's one thing. Secondly, and what you're here for tonight is the PFAS response. And we are on the ground running right now. We were out at the plant this afternoon. We have performed the first of four quarters of sampling, as the city manager said, on the wells, and that'll give us a really good idea what's happening. We're looking at a short-term PFAS plan. This is no fun, right? I, I mean, we've got to deal with this, and, and the city, everything I've heard them say is a fast response, urgent, and we've been moving as fast as we can. We just basically started on this less than 10 days ago, right? So we've already accomplished a lot, but we have more, we have more work to do. We're going to perform some bench and pilot testing, and those are small-scale treatment plants, and we'll talk about that and show you some pictures in a second. And we want to estimate our capital and operating costs so that we can go for funding and try to minimize the impacts to the customers for, you know, getting you good water. There is good news in this, in that you're in a relatively lower realm of PFAS levels, and it's one that's treatable, right? We, we know how to treat and remove PFAS. Getting rid of it is another matter, but the technology is well-tested, well-proven, and it's in full-scale use. So that we know. What we're going to focus on is which one of these technologies to use. Granular activated carbon, you see those in, in all your point of, most of your point-of-use filters, like your, your filter pitchers, your refrigerator filters, those all use granular activated carbon. And that's really good for removing things like PFAS, pesticides, things that we, you know, that are small and, and normal treatment plants maybe can't remove. There's another technology, ion exchange out there, that also is promising. And as, as Carlos said, the city of Tampa is investigating that on a, on a, on a bigger scale. Lastly, reverse osmosis, and that's we use the membrane to physically separate out the PFAS from the water and put it in a smaller stream, right? And each one of these has their pros and cons. The city happens to have some really hard water. How many of you out there have a softener? Right? You know, so yeah, you, you have some hard water. So in that case, the membrane technology can also actually soften the water and remove PFAS at the same time. So that may be something we're looking at. You have a current lime softening plant, and that's, that's a, that's a possibility as well. The, the good news is, the technology does exist, we just need to figure out which one is the right one for the city of Temple Terrace. All right, we mentioned the pilot study, right? What is that? So people mention it's pennies on the dollar. Instead of building a, a brand-new big plant, you test it out on a small scale first, right? For pennies on the dollar. So what that allows you to do is, A, prove that you can remove the PFAS constituents, right? And B, estimate the cost to be able to remove those. So that's what we're doing for you. We'll be running a pilot over the next two or three months. Boy Wang, sitting right in the third row there, is our, is our pilot chief, and he will be out at the plants running that. And we're going to come up with a report and conclusions in a, in a relatively short manner, on the order of three months, but we'll, we'll go through that schedule at the end as well. Let's look at the big picture here, because, you know, protecting your watershed and where your potable water comes from is an important thing, right? Like up in, up in New York, right? City of New York, you say, well, you know, they don't protect their water. Actually, they do, because they have the Catskill Mountains, right? And all their, their rain falls in those mountains, and they collect it and send it to the city. They don't let development, they don't let industry work in those watersheds to protect it from contamination and pollution. What's happened to us, which everybody else, now we have contamination in our aquifer, which is a, which is a really productive, nice aquifer, and now we have to clean up that contamination. So from that standpoint, protecting your watershed is key, and that's something everyone can participate in. You see the two stars there? Those are your two water plants. One of them treats about one and a half million gallons a day, Sunnydale, and then there's the larger white wave that treats, let's say, two and a half million gallons a day. So those two plants supply all the water to the city, and both of them have tested positive. So what we're looking at here, though, is, in the future, the city is already working on it, is steps to protect our watershed going forward, right? You know, how did this get in? How do we keep it from coming in? Is there anything we can do in the groundwater to mitigate the PFAS itself? And if not, then we'll handle it on the treatment end. You, you've seen these numbers, Carlos showed them, but I want to break them down a little more. So this is your current regulatory status. These are proposed rules, and they are going to go into effect 2031, and you are above two of the key contaminant levels, that is PFOA and PFOS. Luckily, those are two of the more treatable PFAS constituents, but I want to go over a couple of the other ones here. There is one called Gen X, which, thank you, which is, is relatively hard to remove. So what we had was non-detect, that is excellent, that is good news. The EPA, they, they regulated two of these PFAS components, but there's several others. So they created this basket where that you do a calculation of all the other ones you have, and you total it up to a hazard index. And that's what this number is, right here at the bottom, and they calculate to a 1.0 is the limit. You cannot go higher than that, and we're pushing right up against it because of this guy, PFBS, and that's a surfactant that, that was used, and it is pushing us up a little higher there and causing this to, to push against one. So that's another one. And one of the things, and the important things of the pilot study is, we want to see what it does, how we get the PFBS out, as well as the PFOA and PFOS. So that's the purpose of the pilot, is to look at some of these other constituents that also have an impact on, on, you know, us complying with the regulations and go from there. All right. Another big consideration is interim treatment, right? What can we do right now to treat this, right? Is there something we can plug into our water plant and, and take this PFAS out of the water, right? So there is, you know, the answer is there is. These activated carbon and ion exchange manufacturers, they have, they typically come in a configuration that is a steel pressure vessel. So you see these full-scale pressure vessels here, they're pretty big things, but that's how you load the carbon, the activated carbon, or the ion exchange into those vessels, and you run the water through the vessels and treat it. These things are pretty easy to manufacture, and they can be shipped on trucks. So there are at least three or four manufacturers that will rent you these things and put the material in it to, to treat the water on a short-term basis. It's big in mining waste, right? When people come in and they short-term mine something, they'll bring these temporary treatment facilities into those and treat the water. Now, here's the, here's the bad news, is that since everyone is facing this, this, these PFAS issues, these are a little hard to come by right now. So the, the manufacturing times are high, and the vendors are doing the best they can, there's new manufacturers coming online, but we are already in talks with four manufacturers to try to get this, to see what the cost of these things would be for the city, and if they're feasible, and, and what the availability would be too. So there's also similar units on the RO side, reverse osmosis, they come in a, like a tractor-trailer truck, you know, so they load the skids onto those, and they, you know, they'll wheel the tractor-trailer up to your side, and, and off you go. And the, the thing is, these are, these are not cheap to rent, but, you know, we'll run the costs in the city, and you will make the decision. All right. Another big question when you're in this situation is point-of-use and point-of-entry treatment at your own house, right? And point-of-use means you've got a sink in the kitchen, and you want to put one on the kitchen sink. Point-of-entry means you're putting a whole-house filtration system on your house, right? And I didn't see that until probably 2017, I did a master plan for Fort Lauderdale, and they're on the, they're on the Biscayne Aquifer, which looks like chocolate tea, right? So a lot of folks down there had whole-house RO systems on there, because the water came out colored from the, from the city. So you don't have that, but you do have a concern here, and these are the options. So the most important thing about the point-of-entry, point-of-use, is to make sure you get the certifications right. You want to look for the NSF 53 for the granular activated carbon filters, right? And then you want to look for the NSF ANZI 58 for the reverse osmosis systems. There's also, in addition to NSF, there's third-party certifications. There's organizations that have tested certain point-of-use filtrations to see how effective they are, so there's that information. I, I highly encourage you to, you know, to research this and, and look for what's best for your own family, but the two big questions come down to, do I do my whole house, or do I only do a certain sink or two, or, you know, a refrigerator? So that's a question you, you might have to answer yourself. I, I don't think in this case, you know, whole-home systems are warranted, they're expensive, and, and they're, they're high maintenance, but, you know, that, that will be up to you. The key to this, and that's why I highlighted it, is maintenance. It's just like a water plant has to be maintained, these filters have to be maintained also. If you install them, you've got to change them out, right? Or else they're just going to either not work or grow bacteria in them and, and actually hurt you. So, so you have to be careful, it's the maintenance that, and, and getting a good certified that will get you in the right direction. the right direction. Uh, I gave a few examples here, and the EPA.gov gives you a good rundown as well. All right. We're getting close to the end, because I know you guys are chomping at the bit to get questions in, and we're ready for those. But impacts to the city, and this is where it's, it's really a bummer, right? You know, we've got to upgrade our treatment plants to get rid of this contaminant and get it down to levels that are acceptable to the federal regulators and to, you know, you guys, right? I mean, I think you guys are going to come down to making this decision, and, and your elected officials, right? So your point-of-use devices, that's not, those aren't free. You know, whole-house ones can run from $15,000 down to, you know, $5,000. The, the smaller point-of-use ones, you can get for a hundred bucks on Amazon, right? So, but there's a cost involved with you putting those on and, and us having to put them on in certain places as well. So we've also got a timeline for, for design and construction here, and we happen to be in the middle of the PFOS frenzy right now. And so suppliers are busy, um, you know, those, those things are gonna, things aren't going to move as fast as we could normally move them. And lastly, increase the operating cost. These activated carbon filters, they have to be changed out once a year, and that's every, every big vessel, that's 50 grand. You know, you've got to change out the vessel, that's $50,000, right? Reverse osmosis, you've got a pump, you've got chemicals to use, you know, those, you've got to get rid of the concentrate, you know? So each one of these has a cost associated with it. But I think, as Carlos mentioned, you know, we're looking at, right now, we showed two options, but, um, 5 million gallons a day would treat all of your water, 9 million gallons a day would treat the capacity of your plants. You don't need to treat that right now, but that, we put that on there just for perspective. So, uh, this 5 million gallon right here would treat your, your entire system right now. So that's what, that's what we're, most of... All right. So next steps for the city. I, I put down a big one, continue watershed and well-field protection, right? We, we have to protect our, our, our water supply, right? I mean, that's, that's why we're in this situation. Somebody, you know, dumped something, and it traveled in the aquifer and got to us, right? So this is something, you know, from a, let's, let's just say, from a water management standpoint, we need a protected, uh, watershed where we pull our, our drinking water from. We need to analyze the pending PFOS well-field results. We were hoping to get them back today, but they'll, they should be back this week, and that will give us an idea of the scope of what's, uh, the solution is. We want to complete the pilot study and, um, make sure we can remove that PFBS, see how feasible those plants are, and, and see what it would cost to run these plants for a year, right? So we have to make a decision. We're going to boil it down to lifecycle costs, capital costs, operating costs, and that translates into what rates you pay, right? So we want to minimize that, and we're going to look for that. Complete the PFOS short- and long-term plan. Since the master plan and this came up, we have accelerated the PFOS solution, and we're, we're drafting that solution right now. We will need a little bit of pilot, pilot results and some more testing to get that in, but we are working on it as fast as we can, and we are going to come up with a, a PFOS plan that's, that's good, and a couple of options, that's good for you and good for the elected officials, right? Lastly, we do need to ramp up funding support, um, and to implement these solutions. Did anybody see that movie Dark Waters out there? Have you guys watched that? You know, I, I highly recommend that you watch it, because those folks got settlements and payments, and they received nothing. You know, so if you think, if you, even if you win a settlement, that doesn't mean you're going to get money, right? These are the folks that, up here, that are fighting for you. That's who we need to get behind, and that's who we need to focus on, you know, making the solution and getting it paid for. So that's all I had. I appreciate y'all's time, and I, I'll turn it back over to Carlos. I think the, the last thing was a, a quick schedule, and this, this does show you, a lot is going to happen over the next three or four weeks, right? So we'll have the, the pilot plant up and operating probably in about a month and a half, and, um, we'll be producing draft reports. We'll have, we'll have the sampling results, I'm sure the city will publish as soon as we, you know, scrub the room and QC them. And then we're going to be, um, pursuing funding. There's a deadline, August 31st, that we want to try to make in, uh, to get some additional money. I think it is going to take lobbying our local, state, and federal, uh, elected officials to get something, a, a chunk of money to, you know, get us down this road. So, uh, we are, we are attacking it from both ends, all ends, and, um, we appreciate you guys coming again. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over now to the city attorney, Ernie Mueller.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Ernie Mueller, the city's city attorney. Um, I'm not going to be very long. I know you all want to get to your questions, but I would like to take just a minute or two to brief you on the action the city is taking, uh, to address the PFAS situation legally, and what the process is going to be going forward. So... To begin with, all the litigation, all the lawsuits against the PFAS, or the PFAS, uh, litigation has been consolidated in one court, and that is the Federal District Court in Charleston, South Carolina. Now, the city has engaged three law firms who will be working together to represent the city in this multi-district litigation or multi-district settlement. We have, uh, our primary contact is going to be a local firm, Manson, Bolvis, Donaldson, and Tanner. They've been brought aboard because they have a very extensive experience in environmental, uh, issues in the state of Florida, and, uh, are, uh, and are familiar with the, uh, the Tampa Bay water industry. They have affiliated with two law firms, one in New Orleans and one in Dallas, and both of those firms are specialists in this multi-district, uh, litigation or settlement. Currently, we are involved in participating in one of these settlements, and that is with, well, actually, it's two. It's the 3M Company and DuPont. And there will be more litigation and settlement to come. But our outside attorneys will then be working with our staff members to document the evidence, to make the claims, and to evaluate the city's potential recovery from existing and proposed class settlements. And we do plan on getting some settlement money on this to help pay. So... I think this is an important piece of information. In this, uh, in the 3M and DuPont, uh, they have created this demarcation date of June of 2023. And, uh, those drinking water providers who detected PFAS prior to June of 2023 were placed in Phase 1. All other providers were placed in Phase 2 unless those providers opted out. The city was designated as a Phase 2 qualifying class member in both the 3M and DuPont settlements, and we did not opt out. Now, important thing here is, in Phase 1, the settlement payouts were scheduled to occur this summer, summer of 2025, and you've probably been reading or hearing on the news those settlements that are beginning to come out. I believe the city of Tampa got settled. Phase 2 settlements are scheduled for next summer, summer of 2023, uh, 2026. So that's when, uh, we plan on getting some payouts sent. So a settlement claims administrator has been appointed to evaluate the claims and to distribute settlement funds, and there have been four separate funds that were created for the benefit of Phase 2 class members. First is a settlement fund, and in just a second, I'll give you a little more detail on that one. But there's also a testing fund, which will reimburse the city for the testing that we do. We have the special needs fund that allows the city to seek compensation for any funds that is expended related to PFAS. Uh, this claim would be used to seek compensation for the funds that the city will be spending on its consultants in determining how to develop, uh, a plan to address PFAS and for the implementation of that plan. And then there's the supplemental claims fund, which would compensate water utilities, uh, that see future increases in PFAS contamination or new PFAS contamination. Now, the settlement fund itself, uh, that's going to be divided up among the water utilities that have filed claims, and there's going to be a formula that they're going to take into account. That's going to be the size of each water utility, which is going to be measured in flow rates, and then the level of contamination found in each of the water utility's well sources. So balancing those two, a larger water utility, especially if they sell water, uh, will have a larger flow rate and may receive a larger portion of that settlement pie. But also, keep in mind, a smaller water utility with a more dramatic contamination level may qualify for larger settlements at some of its larger levels. So that's really all I have at this time, just to kind of give you an idea of what's going on legally. Thank you.
Hey, Mrs. Barlow, I'll turn it over to you, if you would. There are seats up here that we will not be returning to. There's a row of seats that have six seats up front here, um, that are available for anybody who'd like to come up and sit down.
Okay, we're going to get started. We have about a dozen requests to speak form in our first round. After we're done with the dozen speakers, we will take a brief recess so that anybody else who has a question, who has not filled out a form, can visit Mary at this table over here and, um, put your questions in. So when I call the first five people, please come sit in our on-deck seats, and then, one at a time, approach the microphone, state your name and city of residence for the record. And you'll have, like I said, up to five minutes to speak. Please speak into the microphone so that it can pick up your voice. And with that, I guess we'll get started. So our first five speakers are Carol Dell, Michael Crowell, Greg Vatar, Cherie Harrington, and Daria Navan. And I apologize if I've mispronounced your name. Do we have our other two speakers? Okay. So I guess we will start with Carol Dell.
I assume the microphone is on. Uh, my name is Carol Dell, and I live in Temple Terrace. And as a point of reference, I've lived here for a long time. My husband and I raised our children, and our grandchildren were raised in Temple Terrace also. And I mention that because my questions and my concern are dealing with the past, the present, and the future. Now, I think my question has already been answered, but I need to have it dumbed down for me a little bit. So my first question is, how long have these PFAS levels been at this concerning level? And the second question is, is there a reason this level is concerning? And by that I ask, um, has, have we always had this level? But is it now becoming a concern because the EPA or other regulatory bodies have changed the standards? That happens in a lot of things, and I'm just wondering if that might be what has brought it all to light. Not that I'm thrilled to death that we've had these before, but I'm just wondering how come all of a sudden now, according to that map, we're like turquoise almost everywhere in our country? My other question, um, and it's probably a little far-fetched, but I'm just wondering if those ETO gases that come from that sterilization plant in Telecom Park that people are talking a lot about, and that we've actually heard about for the last couple of years, if those have any effect with our water supply? And even if they don't, I think a topic for another day is what that effect is on us, and I worry about the people who work over there. I worry about the people that live over there, and I worry about the firefighters that sleep 24, they don't sleep, they don't sleep 24 hours. They are there 24 hours a day around that particular plant that has those high levels. So those are my questions and concerns. Thank you.
Sorry, I neglected to mention that, uh, the questions will be addressed after each round of speakers have finished. Okay. So, um, we have Michael Crowell, you did not want to speak? Cherie Harrington?
Hello, Cherie Harrington, for the record. For, um, approximately 72 days, I've been a resident in Temple Terrace. I have been the chief operating officer of the Chamber of Commerce for almost a year. And I come from Washington State three years ago, and I was just back there for, back there for a month. My daughter got married, and I was drinking water out of the tap. And I have first 15, sorry, it's cutting out, first 50 years of my life. Can you still hear me, Brian? For the first 50 years of my life, I drank water out of the tap. I served my kids out of the tap. I gave my chickens, my goats, my garden, everybody got water out of the tap. Do you want me to stop talking? Keep going. So my concern is for my personal health, because I have multiple autoimmune disorders, and my roommates and I just have almost gone through a five-gallon jug of spring water from Zephyr Hills, uh, in two days, so washing all my vegetables and fruits and everything. So I'm here as a concerned citizen, as well as someone with the Chamber of Commerce concern for all of our businesses, um, in the area, as well as out. So, um, at this time, I don't have any questions. I just want to share a little bit of who I am, and I'm looking forward to continued information. Thank you.
We have Daria Navan.
Hi, good evening. My name is Daria Navan. I've been a resident of Temple Terrace for 21 years. In full disclosure, I'm also a professional engineer, and I work on PFAS. So I'm very interested in this issue, uh, you know, as someone who's been consuming this water, and also as someone who works on these types of issues for my career. Thank you very much for the presentations this evening. You know, it's been fantastic. Really appreciate the city addressing this, uh, you know, in the manner, in the manner that you have. Um, I do just want to bring up, uh, one issue that I haven't really heard people talking about. Um, you know, our wells are screened in the upper Floridian aquifer, um, and they're, they're relatively shallow, and I just wanted to make sure that you guys are aware that there was a, uh, U.S. Geological Survey, uh, study that was done. It was published in 2007, where they looked specifically at the vulnerability of specifically well number four, Temple Terrace, well number four, uh, to contamination. And as part of that study, they installed, uh, about 15 monitoring wells, uh, around Temple Terrace. If those monitoring wells still exist, I don't know if they've been abandoned, I think it would be worthwhile to sample those wells. I think that could give us a better idea as to the distribution of the PFAS. And as part of the study, they also noted that a lot of the water that we're getting, especially at well number four, which was the focus, is coming from the superficial aquifer. So, you know, they looked at the age of the groundwater, and they, they saw that it was, um, you know, 50/50 basically, superficial aquifer and Floridian. And the... And the superficial aquifer is a lot more vulnerable to contamination. So the other thing that they did was they also looked... They sampled at multiple depths within the Floridian aquifer. And, you know, as you get deeper in the Floridian, you don't have as much influence from the superficial. So I'm wondering, you know, maybe as a parallel track, if we could maybe look at investigate, you know, getting water from deeper portions of the upper Floridian, or maybe even into the lower Floridian, which I know can get brackish, but I'm just thinking, you know, that if we should look at that, that could actually save us a lot of expense if we don't have to, you know, add treatment to our plants. I mean, you know, the numbers that we were seeing are enormous, and we're not a very big city, so, you know, that would have a tremendous financial impact if we... It would be a lot cheaper, you know. And I'm not saying that this is necessarily the solution, but I do think that it's something we should look at, you know, tapping deeper into the Floridian to see if we could maybe find some water that, you know, was not contaminated with PFAS. Also, I just wanted to, you know, you had mentioned looking at the wellfields and doing some wellfield protection. Good idea, but the problem that we have in Temple Terrace and a lot of, you know, Florida really is that we have a karst aquifer. So what that means is that we are getting water from miles away. There are, you know, channels, there are sinkholes. I mean, like well number four, it's actually tapped into basically an underground cavern. We're also pulling in water from the Hillsborough River. So the PFAS could be coming from miles away. We'll just never find it unless we do a lot of dye tracer testing, which is expensive. So just something for maybe my fellow citizens to understand, that we'll probably never really know the source of this, so we just have to deal with it. Thank you.
Okay, that was our first five people. Turned out to be three. I'm going to call five more names.
Jeannie.
Yes, please return to your seats. Thank you.
Miss Barlow, Mrs. Barlow?
Yes.
So we're going to take questions that we're... We're taking questions after each group of five.
Okay, let's have some questions answered.
So, let me just pull the mic over here. So to Mrs. Dell's question about how long has a PFAS level been at this concerning level, and if it's becoming a concern because the EPA is changing its standards, I just want to revisit what we talked about in the presentation. So if you recall, in 2013 to 2015, EPA standards at the time, we reported that we were a non-detect. Temple Terrace is a non-detect based on those PFAS chemicals. And that led in 2016, if you recall, to the EPA nationally saying an acceptable level at least PFOS and PFFA combined was 70 parts per trillion. And then you fast-forward again now to UCMR-5, so in 2023 to 2025, then now they're saying it's four parts per trillion. So yes, the regulations have definitely changed pretty substantively. And so when we tested back in 2013, and then we tested again, because the EPA said, "Go ahead and test again in 2023 to 2025," which were in this period, that's when we found we've got the levels that we have, that we, both the consultant and I, put on the screen, and hence the reason, because of the new four parts per trillion versus the old 70 parts per trillion, for example. That's the situation that we're in right now. As far as what the last speaker mentioned, I'm going to turn it over to Ed, because I think she, probably engineer to engineer, probably would be a better person to respond.
Oh, sure. And that was excellent information, and local knowledge like that is important to get this done right. So when we talk wellfield production, protection, yeah, we may have to go to a new wellfield. It may just not be protectable. So that is the case. We just sunk three or four of these deep supply wells in Osceola County, and they run $6 to $7 million a pop for a well, and you'd probably need four of them, three or four of them. So, you know, there's cost to each alternative, but that would give you a little more peace of mind and a little more protected, you know, wellfield. So everything she said is spot-on, and we totally agree with it, and it should be looked at.
Okay, we're ready for the next round of speakers. When I call your name, please come sit in our on-deck chairs. Brooke Hanson, Gary Tub, Tara McDaniel Brown, Tom Cross, and Ed Levine. And our first speaker is Brooke Hanson.
Hi, everyone. I am Brooke Hanson. I live on the corner of White Way and Gillette, and I appreciate that you're all working on the big, long-term solutions of this problem. My questions have to do with some more immediate concerns. Is this going to be a disclosure issue for people who want to rent properties or people who are selling their properties, just like you need to disclose other types of things? And I don't expect that you would have the answers to many of these questions, but I hope that you'll raise these questions in future council meetings. And also, obviously, we just heard this news, so it could be a disclosure issue for future renters and home buyers, but what if you're a current renter like myself, and you're concerned about this, would like to move out of Temple Terrace? Is that grounds to break a lease, and would the city support that? So that's one question I had. And also, I'm concerned about the restaurants and the food and beverage purveyors across Temple Terrace, and I've been afraid to eat or drink anything, but I did see that Starbucks has an RO system, Bora Bora has an RO system, but I've also seen some other restaurants posting things on social media that, "Oh, we just installed a filtration system, so we're 100% good, come eat and drink here," but I'm not sure. So is the city going to include some of these things in future health department permits for restaurants who are using the water to give people drinks at their table, or to make soup, or rice, or other kinds of things that really absorb the water? So I'm just curious about the whole restaurant and food issue. And also, many of us, as my roommate Cherie said, are out buying lots of Zephyr Hills water, and we're going through it like crazy. And we can kind of afford it, I think, I'm not totally sure, but what about all the people in Temple Terrace that they've seen on social media who can't even afford to buy drinking water? And maybe they're a single mother with three kids, and they're having their kids drink the water and bathe in the water. Is there anything we could do as a community to maybe help low-income people access a filter, or maybe some of us could donate drinking water and they could get it? So I just want to make sure we're trying to take care of everybody in our community. And as devastating as all of this is, and we're facing this across the country, I'm a gardener. So, yeah, I looked it up. Extension offices all over the country have done the research. Your leafy greens and your legumes suck PFAS right up. So I pulled all my leafy greens out. I'm not going to eat them anymore. Fruits, pull them in a little less so, but now I can't garden anymore. So that's very devastating to me. And I was just wondering if we've mentioned that to people. In the wintertime, we're mostly watering from the municipal water, because we don't get a lot of rain. So that's a concern, and I've seen there are studies out there on that. And have we also reached out to our farmers and producers in Temple Terrace? Like, maybe don't give this water to your animals, maybe get a filtration system, you know, because that's the food and the stuff that we eat and we drink. And I'm also wondering with the kids going back to school today, are messages being sent out through the school that the school has municipal water, it's in the water fountains, it's in the cafeteria? Are we using that channel just to try to encourage people to get filters and get drinking water? And the other question I had was really about the pharmaceuticals in the water, because I've looked at the research, and this is a countrywide issue too, and most municipal systems are showing 30 to 60 pharmaceuticals in the water. Have we looked at that? If we're going to put something in, can we really make great water and get the pharmaceuticals out there too? So just some thoughts, and thank you very much for all of your efforts. And for the audience here, as upset as we are, we're all upset, we're concerned, and we're thinking about many things, how many of us have bought products that were produced by 3M or DuPont? How many of us are using Roundup and chemical fertilizers and shampoos and other things that are filled with these chemicals? So this is all of us too. Let's examine all of our own lives and our own chemicals and try to protect our watershed better. So I think we're all in this boat together. It'll be... I think it'd be really good if we could just think about that, you know? If we could all work together, let's change our personal habits, support the city, and support people who maybe can't afford filters and water, maybe we'll be in a better place. So thank you.
Thank you. And I have Gary Tub.
My name's Gary Tub. I am 82 years old. Records so far. And my neighbor across the street, she is 85 years old. And my other neighbor, she is 89. So the... And the point is that we've been drinking well water because... And that's one of my second questions. So it's not only that you have water supply, but we have people that are on well water, and we have people in Temple Terrace that are on well water, and that needs to be addressed. Well, my first question is, did you know that we had a super fund by EPA over about 100 yards across 56, and that was in 1970, 1991? That there was a company called Gulf Coast Battery, and then it changed its name to Gulf Coast Recycling. And they destroyed batteries right across the street. In 1991, it was discovered by children... By the way, that is now covered over by a apartment complex. And it was discovered in 1991 when children found shredded lead in their playground. So there is a report that was done on this, and I would like to know, my first question is, I'd like to know if our attorney or anyone else is following up on this super fund, and what potential of being able to look at that for monies to help in dealing with the situation we have now. So that's my first question. Second question is, as I said, a large number of the, I believe we have in Temple Terrace, according to the census, 11,131 people. Now, not all of those people have water from the city. In fact, I would suspect a large number of the people have well water. And we need to be thinking about, what are we going to do with those people? We can't just say, "Sorry, you're not connected." We have to do something about that. The... In addition, I can't think of what I had to say. Hi, and it's super fun. Yeah. Oh, this... So one of the speakers did mention that there's something that you can do as an individual if you feel really like our last speaker about how desperate they are to find some resolution now as opposed to in 2031. And one of our speakers did mention that you can get from Home Depot or from Lowe's a device that would filter your water as low as $150. You drink out of the sink, because where are you going to be cooking? You're going to be cooking where the sink is. You don't need this expensive device to flush your toilet. You don't need this expensive device to, you know, to take a bath. Key is the water you drink. That's the concern. And so I would like that speaker again to identify more appropriately the type of devices that we could install under the sink, and I would like to see our water department, which I've had very good work with. I've worked with them. They're very clear about all of the bills and that sort of thing, and why it went up, to identify the type of device that you have and cost that you would have, just like they have a handout for irrigating of our lawns. Do we need this, except for our gardeners, this expensive device for our...
Mr. Tub, you're more than welcome to fill out another speaker form if you want to continue. No, you can fill out another form, and you can speak in the next round. Okay, the next speaker is Tara McDaniel Brown.
Good to see you all again. Thank you again for having the City Hall meeting for us and all the residents. I lived here for 35 years, a little bit more than that, but the safety, health, and welfare of the residents is in jeopardy, and it has been. From what we've heard, it's lasted longer than what we have found out. I wanted to follow up, this is my question. I wanted to follow up on our request for all the records per the Sunshine Law. All records we are requesting are the files, anything related to the situation, all documents, any federal or state EPA conversation, letters, emails, text messages from the mayor all the way down the line. If it hasn't, I am requesting it formally now. I do know that it has been requested. I'm still waiting on a response from that, and would like that. I'm not sure how people realize how this is affecting our residents. I've spoke to many. It's affecting, it's bothering, it's bathing ourselves, bathing our children, our infants. Hot showers increase your PFAS. Your pores are open. Guess where it's going? You're washing your face, you're brushing your teeth. I've lost two teeth this year, not from my teeth being a problem, but my gums are a problem. The last three or four years, myself and one of my children have health issues, some serious, and all of them have other things that can cause them, but one of them is underlying water. We're talking about cooking, cleaning, animals. Water is our life, and it should be safe, which it is not, and currently it is not. It may be national, but I care about Temple Terrace. Again, it still feels that you're downplaying the importance of our city's health and welfare, and it has felt like political smokescreen. From the original thing that came out, microscopic as you can see. Not every resident got this item. Not every business got this item. I have taken off work today, matter of fact, evenings, to visit businesses and to speak to residents. I've yelled out my window to notify people. I've asked numerous people, have they gotten this? No. I didn't get it, but I never fail to get my water bill, which is what this should have been in. It came in its own envelope. I got this from a neighbor's sister, okay? Not at my home. On page four of this water report, it talks about us. Please share this information with all the other people who drink this water, especially those that have not received this notice directly. And I mentioned this once before, why is that the resident's responsibility? So I took it upon myself to do that. I used my car today, filled it up twice, drove around through parking lots, through Publix, through Windexy, down Fowler, in front of Planet Fitness. I yelled out my window to notify people. I yelled out my window to notify people. I'm too busy trying to raise good humans. That's my goal. I should not be having to do the work that the city should have been doing and still should be doing. Thank you very much for the signs all over the city. I appreciate that, to notify of the meeting. I am now adding to my budget water, not by choice, and I'm using it in many places in my home. No, I don't need it to flush my toilet, but I need it to make mac and cheese for my children. I need it for my son, who has severe eczema, to wash his body, his face, which I keep in the bathroom for him to use. No one uses sink water to brush their teeth anymore. I don't have the money to be adding to my own budget, something that is not free, but it should be clean, and it's not. I should not have to add these systems or filters to my water. In, in two weeks, we have went through three five gallons of water. I now have Water Boy who delivers to me. That's fine. I've basically settled.
Tom Cross?
Thank you. My name's Tom Cross. I'm a resident of Temple Terrace for the past twenty-two years. I'm also a professional engineer and a clean water, uh, professional. And I've worked from the cities of Daytona to Tampa Bay area. I appreciate the town hall meeting tonight, city council meetings leading up to this. I have done, been involved a lot of public information on different projects, maybe moving forward, the city could make the report a little more clear for the public to read. Um, that might not be a bad suggestion. I just really had two bookkeeping questions. One, the city manager had mentioned, in the discussions, uh, we currently don't have any interconnects with Hillsborough County, which we've got Hillsborough County folks here, actually, I think they left, um, and City of Tampa. So is that in the discussions with PFAS? Has there been any discussion about at least looking into getting any emergency interconnects with either system and perhaps even Tampa Bay Water? That's, we're not a member of government, so I don't, that's not something that we could necessarily tap into, but at least as an emergency connection. And then as CHA goes through the study, once the final, um, recommendation's made, as the city started thinking about how that project will get designed and delivered, is it gonna be a traditional design bid build with CHA's contract extended or is it gonna go back out? Maybe a C Mar, progressive design build, just how to, uh, there's a lot of stuff moving parts right now, but in a year, we're gonna be somewhere and what, kind of where are we at with that? So those are my two questions.
Thank you. And our last speaker of the round is Ed Levine.
Thanks for the opportunity to raise questions. I live in, uh, Temple Terrace, uh, have lived in Temple Terrace for forty years. I moved here when I was two. Questions in two parts. On the technical side, when you say four parts per trillion, what does that exactly mean? Uh, does that mean that, uh, if you're converting it to ounces, that there are four ounces of PFAs for a trillion ounces of water that is free of PFAs? What is, what exactly is parts per trillion? Given that you've got, uh, such a small, um, indication of PFA in the water, few parts per trillion, how do we know that the tests are reliable? What's the protocol to ensure reliability? And what, uh, is the, uh, what are the data telling us about the degree to which the tests show consistency and stability over time, um, in terms of, uh, the, the content of PFAs? The, um, other technical question is, what exactly is the connection? How do you draw the connection between the amount of PFAs in the water and some problems with health and mental health? What, uh, do you have to do? Do you have to drink water consistently for ten years, five years, two days? What's the connection between the amount of PFAs and the occurrence of any physical and mental health problems? On the, um, the practical side, I'll, I'll voice some concern, um, with, uh, the previous speaker, cause I tried on several occasions to get ahold of the person named in the report, to ask some questions about the report itself without success. I never got a call back. So, uh, that needs to change. And, um, finally, it seems to me that, um, it's, uh, really not my part to pay for filtration and other steps to mitigate problems in the water. I'm paying the City of Temple Terrace to deliver me clean water and I pay a reasonable amount to do that. And the fact that, uh, I'm not getting the pure water that I'm paying for is a concern. It seems to me that the city is responsible for any mitigation. And if they want us to do something about it, they should reimburse us for any expenses that we have in conjunction with, um, filtering or otherwise purifying the water.
Okay, I'm going to try to answer the questions and I may be passing the microphone down to the representative from CHA for proportion of this. Mr. City Attorney, any, any insight? Would you like to take the microphone for the question regarding disclosures, potential disclosures for people who want to rent or sell properties or grounds to break a lease?
I am not aware of a requirement yet for that type of disclosure, but there may be. I just, I, I'm not aware of that. Might make for an interesting new area of law if, uh, it becomes a basis for breaking leases and stuff like that. But I really, I don't have any answer for that at this time.
Next question or comment was about restaurants. And we will, we will, as part of our, our task force meetings, we'll also be reaching out and also our staff have in the past, uh, to the Department of Health, um, to just see if we can get on the same page with them in terms of any sort of outreach regarding this issue. And so that's what we'll do. Uh, in terms of, uh, potentially, uh, help for folks accessing a filter, I think, uh, Ed had mentioned different filtration options as low as a hundred dollars on, on up, um, filtration systems. We did check, uh, with Hillsborough County, uh, we can dig a little deeper with this. They, they do have programs in their water services department for, for folks who may be of, uh, low income, uh, at least for water bills and things like that. We don't know, but we can open those conversations. We've talked with the, as I mentioned in the presentation, we have talked with the Hillsborough County Waters, Water Department staff. And we can inquire, we can, again, this is also an issue that impacts the county. Again, they have PFAS just basically in the same categories as we do. So we'll inquire with them as to whether there's a program that might be county, countywide. The next question was, uh, have we looked at pharmaceuticals in the water and in terms of the potential filtration solutions? I'm gonna hand this over to, to Ed.
Thank you. To answer that question, we have not yet looked at anything that is not regulated. So we're, we're focused on the regulated, um, constituents right now, and that's something we will consider though. That's a, it's a good comment. And, um, while we're in the process of fixing up the water plant, we might as well look to the future as well, because there's another PFAS coming right behind it. So, um, I did want to also mention to the woman who is the gardener, there are something called RV water filters and they screw onto a hose bib. So you can get those relatively cheap for like fifteen bucks that will screw onto your hose bib and you can, um, feel a little better about gardening there.
Next question from Mr. Tub, uh, was a comment about Gulf Coast Battery and the super fund site. So we are aware of this site. Um, it's several decades old as, as Mr. Tub has referenced. We will make that information if they don't already have it. We'll make sure that CHA has that to look into in terms of the research. There is a question about, uh, looking at well water issues for people who might be on city, not on city wells, excuse me, but on their own personal wells. Uh, we will look at that as well right now. I don't know if that's, well, actually, let me turn it over to these folks, see if that's, uh, any of this would be applicable to folks who are individual.
Yeah, and, um, you know, as I was, uh, getting ready for this meeting last night, I was watching, um, Bob Bocock in, um, Georgia, in a Georgia PFAS meeting. And a lot of those folks up there, y, y, you would feel better about yourselves if you watched that. But, um, they are pulling from wells and they have, uh, PFAS levels in the tens of thousands of parts per trillion. So, um, from, from that standpoint, there are, there are rules about, um, notification of well users that, that have to be followed legally, but, um, it is something that I, I would advise, you know, I don't know that you want somebody drinking, you know, high levels of PFAS from a well in your service area. It's definitely something that we should address in some way.
Um, and, and Ed, do you wanna, do you wanna pull up your slide with the filters, the different filter options? You might, um, escape from that, cause that question came up about, uh, some devices, again, referencing to devices that people could look to install. I know in Mr., uh, in his presentation, he had a slide that talked about that. We'll put that up on the screen. You can have that as a reference going forward. And we had a question about the request for records. I believe we know which request for records that is. We are working on that. There was a open-ended, the request was very broad, um, and the, the request, or this actually earlier today narrowed the scope of the request. So we're, we anticipate having that request fulfilled shortly. We also had, uh, a question about the emergency connections to Tampa and Hillsborough County. That is absolutely the case. So we met with City of Tampa and when we met with Hillsborough County, we, we did, we have two purposes for that meeting. Again, we wanted to learn about their PFAS situations and what they were doing about it. But we also wanted to broach that conversation about making that connection. As I mentioned, having a system that's connected, uh, in a region from a regional perspective is, is a lot better for our individual water systems in terms of particularly for emergencies. Uh, again, you can open the valve and you provide some, some volume of water that can mitigate for a lot of things. So we are having those conversations. In fact, the likelihood is that, uh, the Hillsborough County is more viable to connect with us, at least from a regulatory perspective. And they're, they've already started working on trying to find the closest locations to make those connections. Now, we're talking about, this may be a ways, we have to pipe, you know, install certain pipelines, things like that. We're investigating that with them. Uh, they're also working on potentially what an intergovernmental bulk water rate could be, uh, in case they make the connection and they wanna sell us some water, again, to mitigate some of our PFAS concerns. Uh, so we're looking at all of those things and the county have been great. So I wanna thank the, the folks, if there were any folks here from Hillsborough County, I wanna thank them. I wanna thank the folks from Tampa Bay Water and the folks from the City of Tampa as well. Again, we're all kind of dealing with the same issue and they were very helpful to us. Next question was, uh, will the next stage be design bid build or design build? Uh, at this point, I'm not sure where we are with it.
Yeah, and we're, we're not to that stage as to what, what is gonna be the fix for this. So until we know it, w, we're only going so far, right? So our scope is so far, we're gonna figure it out and go from there. There are creative ways that, that we can reduce the cost for city, uh, for the city, like pre-purchasing equipment from, uh, suppliers themselves, uh, to reduce taxes and, and some of the contractor markup. But, but in the end, you know, you're gonna need a contractor to, to install this though. Uh, you know, there are, there are multiple methods and we're, we're gonna get the one that works best for the city. But, um, our, our scope is, is pretty much gonna stop when we, um, come up with the PFAS plan.
If you could hold on to that mic right there, cause I think these next questions are probably within your wheelhouse. Mr. Levine asked about four parts per trillion, and I know this is a hard concept for a lot of us, uh, in terms of understanding what that might mean. So what does that exactly mean for four parts per trillion? Can you give them an analogy that would help understand that?
Sure, sure. And, and when you see concentrations like that, it's, it's mass divided by volume, right? So it's the mass of the PFAS sitting in a volume of water. So he, he, the, the analogy he gave was, was pretty correct, except for it's a, it's a mass of, a weight of PFAS sitting in that giant volume of water. I'll, I'll give another analogy that I've seen. It's if you filled your bathtub up with sand, with grains of sand, th, those are about a trillion grains of sand in your bathtub, right? So you, you would drop four grains of sand into your bathtub and that's the limit for PFAS, right? So it's, it's weight over volume, but you know, from that standpoint, um, those analogies work pretty well, I think.
And Ed, so knowing that we're talking about with your example, four grains of sand in a bathtub full of sand, how do we know? The next question was, how do we know that the tests are reliable to get down to those minute amounts?
Oh, sure. And there's, um, the city used a national lab. W, we also used a national laboratory. They have quality control standards. There's only about, uh, two or three in Florida that do it. So we know who those are and we, uh, and that's who we used. And so the results, again, the question was, are they consistent? And from the city's first sampling to the second sampling, the results are very consistent. So, uh, I, I don't know if you saw the numbers, but they're about the same and they're about the same for both of your plants, which, which kind of tells you it's a little widespread, you know, and it's spread throughout the city. So, um, from that standpoint, I think there was one other question about, you know, the, the city paying for point of use. And I, you know, my only comment to that is, I mean, you pay the city, right? I mean, that, you fund the city, so it's actually coming from you as well. So it's gonna get there somehow. But, um, yeah, that, the bottom line is if, if that's what you feel to protect yourself and your family and, and those around you, I think, you know, we, we as a community have to step up and, you know, and get those things put in.
And then there's a comment, a comment made, not necessarily a question about not having gotten a call back. I apologize for that. Uh, Mr. Warren Fellis is right here, the Director of Public Works. And we're gonna try our best to answer your questions, not only this evening, but going forward, um, whether they be an email or phone calls, et cetera. And we're gonna put more information, again, on the city's website so that you can refer to that anytime you'd like. And I think that may be the bulk of the questions for this round. Yes. Oh, yes, sir. Yep, thank you for reminding. Okay, I had it buried here. So what is the, uh, so the question is, the connection between PF, PFAS and health problems? Um, wanna talk to that?
Because this is not a new problem, right? It, it's been studied for thirty years. There's epidemiological studies that have been done and blood tests and what have you. So there's some really good data out there. I, I suggest you go look for it and educate yourself. So, uh, I mean, the, it's, it's, it's not fully known, let's just say that, but there have been studies done. You, you, uh, that movie, uh, Dark Waters explains some of the, the testing that was done in that town. And so we, we know certain things a, about health, but as far as what your exposure was, that's hard to calculate and estimate. You know, so this, this is an unfortunate situation and it's, it's one that the city didn't create, but now we've gotta deal with what the cards we have, and that is get the water clean and protect ourselves as quick as we can, right? You know, so that's, that, that's basically, uh, what, what has happened in the past. You, you, you're, you're welcome to look at some of those epidemiological studies, but, um, you know, it, it runs the gamut. Um, the, the Georgia example that I, I went through, um, Lou, Lou Gehrig's disease is one in a hundred thousand people, right? This small town had thirty thousand people and they had five Lou Gehrig's disease, right? I mean, okay, so we sort of know that that's, that's one of the outputs, right? So, uh, you know, it, but again, it depends on exposure, it depends on the length of time you're exposed to it and, um, that, those studies and the outputs of those are available
Okay, thank you. We have two more request to speak form in the original dozen. After these, uh, two speakers, we will take a brief recess to let everybody who still wants to ask a question, fill out forms and submit them. So we'll call, I'll call the next two speakers, Anne Frichette and Justin Nguyen. So, we'll call, I'll call the next two speakers, Anne Frichette and Justin Nguyen. Oh, Justin. Is Anne here, Anne Frichette? Are there people in the audience who still would like to fill out forms? Okay, so if, okay, is everybody who's filled out a form, submitted their forms? Okay, shall we keep going? Yes, alright. Jim and Lila Young? Karen Mikalski? Meade Lewis? Mustafa Ismail? And Manos Mandarudi? So, if Jim and Lila Young will approach the microphone?
My name's Lila Young and we're relatively new residents here to Temple Terrace and we dearly love it. We're coming from South Florida, West Palm Beach that has had water problems. And I'm kind of very well acquainted with them. And I just have to say that I'm very impressed that you all have taken this on. I saw the signs out and I have to tell you, a lot of this wouldn't be done in a big city like West Palm. It's the truth. I, my husband was born there in West Palm. We lived there over 50 years in a very old home. And luckily, we got a 100-year-old one here too, as well as West Palm. So, we're making the transition over and we really love it. I do want to say I came tonight to see if my questions would be answered. And I had a slew of them and you hit them. And the point that I feel like, I've got such great neighbors. One lady's lived across the street since she was a child. The one next door, she takes her husband who's in the hospital right now, taking dialysis three days a week. The other one on the other side of me, her mother's in Concordia. And you know, you get concerned about these people. I'm a type one diabetic, not a type two, type one, for many, 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 many years. And I just, I just think it's great that you're taking this on. You realize the seriousness. And I think it means a lot to people that are seeing this through other eyes, which I saw in South Florida. So, thank you very much. And my husband thanks you too.
Next, we have Karen Mikalski.
Yes, I would like to also reiterate and thank the city. I thank the city council. I thank all the city council and I wish Mr. Kravitz would also join them at the table instead of being back there. I think I'm very proud of all of you standing here, listening. Yes, the city and all of us, as well as you are concerned about this. I am very thankful for the updates on the website and all of the information. My background, I'm a chemist and I like the professional engineer. I support this every day, Monday through Friday of my job. My company that I work for has a testing instrument. So, I assist with PFAS all the time in my daily job. So, I sent an email in and my request is, what is our test method? Because there's two different test methods. You could do Maspec, Maspec, well, it's actually LC, Maspec, Maspec is the predominant one. And then combustion IC. My company does combustion IC, which is the total. You usually want to do the total amount as opposed to the other ones are specie, you can speciate exactly where your component is coming from. As municipality, you don't really know the point source unless you're going to do litigation, then the point source or the specific species can be traced back. So, now going back to what my questions were is, yes, we all want a quick solution. But as we've known and as we've heard, great resources and information of locals, especially about our wells, I think we need to take not a quick and fast solution, but a smart, long, you know, thought out, all of the stakeholders, everything that can be affected. Primarily is what happens if for some reason our concentrations, our incoming water doubles, triples? How is that going to affect? Are we going to have then in three years, oops, sorry, we got another 30 million because we didn't think about this, the capacity? The other is, as we know, oops, this came about, these add-ons. You know, you guys have all had builds. We've all had contracts of this add-on, this add-on. So, I really would, I would request, I think most of us, because we're paying the bill, that it is thought out. Everybody is thinking, what about this? What about this? Have we thought about this? As somebody said, this is a potential, what would a sinkhole happen to our water and our well? How would that impact? Now, back a couple of years, we don't want to think about this. Mosaic had a sinkhole. Now, part of Mosaic, their fertilizer, that is a organic fluoride component. Tampa water, when this did happen, they had to shut off that well pulling in because they didn't want to pull that water when that sinkhole did happen and their water was put into aquifer. So, that is something I think we should consider. Now, the next thing is that City of Tampa wants to do pure water. So, what is pure water going to do? It's going to take our sewer water, yeah, I'm trying to think of a nice word because we've all said bad word, our sewer water and put it below our aquifer. Now, as the one lady says, you know, how is that going to permeate up? So, I think we should consider that. And then we all want to develop and we all want economic prosperity? I really would think that we now realize well protection and our water and our aquifer is number one. So, when we get businesses, I really think we all would say no to some businesses. Because if that is going to be detrimental to our water source and ultimately our pocketbooks, then yes. And the one gentleman previously said, since it's so small, four parts per trillion, how can you accurately detect it? Our instruments, we can, it's a calibration, but a calibration, it has to be legit. I support many customers and I constantly tell them, sorry, this is failing. Sorry, this is failing. This is what you need to do. And it's just part of a testing mechanism that you have to have. But with accurate calibration, with accurate detection and proper experienced, this is advanced technology. So, somebody off the street can't have it. You need to have a degreed chemist, if not master's degree. And even a master's degree, you have to have experience. I support many PhDs and it doesn't always mean they know. So, it is very much, you know, a trained and learned skill. I believe I have everything and I also sent emails. So, if we could get a feedback, that would be great. Thank you.
Next, we have Meade Lewis.
Howdy. Alright, so I took some notes here and some of these are just things that I want to think about. Okay, this is a highly technical, highly scientific conversation. And the, when we're talking about these topics, science literacy quickly is going to become a problem. So, one of the things that was discussed today was a three-month pilot. Good science cannot happen in three months. This pilot, based off of my understanding, pilots like these need to be years long. We were, you previously mentioned the epidemiology over 30-year usage of these chemicals. No good epidemiology occurs in 30 years. I come from a family of PhDs. My wife is a PhD in immunology infectious disease. I studied medicine, okay? These chemicals are new to our environment, but we're still finding out just how horrible they are. And so, also you mentioned a small-scale pilot, okay? That raises a lot of concerns because they're small-scale pilots. And I mean, you all know what I do. I run a company for oil and gas infrastructure and technology, right? Small-scale pilots are horrific at estimating long-term costs, both in maintenance and upfront capital expenditure. So, what I'm suggesting is that we take a breath, alright, we all slow down. What we're talking about here is $40 million. If we divide that across all of the residents here, that's $1,400 per person. And you know, for some of us, that's fine. Here's $1,400. But for a lot of people here, it's not that easy. That's really painful to their families' food budgets, their families', you know, electricity budgets, everything like that. So, I'm just asking for us to tap the brakes a little bit. 70% of American cities are dealing with this exact same problem, 70%. How about we watch other cities fail first? Because there's going to be a lot of money that's spent by those 70% to try to fix this problem and they are going to fail. And I cannot stand to watch Temple Terrace fall into that trap. Let's talk about this problem a little bit further. Did you know PFOS are now found in the snow on Everest? Alright, and so these chemicals are everywhere. Alright, they're everywhere. And then, they're not all equal either. The F in PFOS stands for fluorine, fluorine, anyway. Gen X is darn near impossible to filter out. Darn near impossible to filter out. And so, when we're talking about PFOAs, those are long-chain molecules, okay? You can do things like the carbon filters and that's effective. Carbon filters effectively do jack for, excuse me, I'm probably not allowed to say that. They don't do much for Gen X. And then that also doesn't really address the problem of what chemical comes out next year? Or the year after that? Or the year after that? Because guess what? These chemicals are still being made. And the solution is, is make them smaller, AKA make them harder to filter. So, a solution that we buy today is probably not going to work for the stuff of tomorrow. And another concern that the chemist mentioned before is city growth. If we buy, I mean, everybody here is rooting for Temple Terrace or you better be. Alright, but the city hopefully grows. Alright, you know, in five years, we might have twice the population that we have today. And so, if we buy a $40 million system, and a lot of these systems aren't linear. It's not just, oh, here's another $40 million, we can, you know, support twice as many residents. That's typically not how these infrastructure projects work. And so, it's a major concern. Long story short, okay, I don't want to waste money here. I want to make the right decision and it's an incredibly difficult decision. And I want scientific literacy to be first and foremost in our minds while we're approaching this problem. Alright, you know, I love each of you. Had conversations with each of you and I'm so proud, so proud to have you as our politicians through all this. You guys are crushing it. Thank you so much.
I have two forms and one person. Are you Mustafa Ismail? Okay.
Yeah, my name is Mustafa Ismail and I'm resident of Temple Terrace for the last 12 years. I have some residential rental property here also. My most of the questions were answered and detailed by Jason on my telephone call. He called me back and explained me everything and some of my questions were answered here. There is only one question I have, that is the refrigerator filter is good? It can reduce the PFAS and we can drink it? Or and we can cook a meal with this water or not? Just this is the only question. All other questions are answered. Thank you so much.
Gee, that was that particular group, correct? That was the, okay. So, let's just find the question here. So, I think Ms. Mikalski asked about two, this might be one for Ed. Two different test methods and which method did we use in our particular case here?
And we used the speciated test method. But we would like to get your card and your information. So, we're open to, you know, new testers all the time and especially a local one. So, yes, we did, we wanted to speciate the method, so that's what we used. At certain times, we may use the other method, but that's the method the city used and we proceeded with that same method.
Next question, I think, maybe we'll just keep the mic. So, the next question is, what happens, I think this is more of a future scenario to consider. What would happen if one of our, excuse me, if one of our incoming water contaminant levels rise? Or increase? I assume that's based upon we do the filtration system and then there's a future contaminant that rises potentially?
Right, and you know, the gentleman that spoke had a really good point is, there are other things on the horizon that are coming and this is the one we're dealing with right now. So, and in fact, some of those full-scale facilities that you saw that we planned and designed, we planned and designed them with the future in mind. And that is, the city also adopts that philosophy is we do want to, when we're making improvements to the water plant, we do want to look into the future to see what is coming next. And you know, we know some of those. There are pharmaceuticals, there's other forever chemicals out there that, you know, that are raising their head. And at the time we do the design, the thing is to make it flexible so that you have a technology that can adapt to those future. But you know, what he was talking about are things that are really hard to remove. And one of them was the Gen X one and luckily, we don't have that. But yeah, if you got the Gen X one, then we're talking about a more difficult treatment process. So, you know, it's going to be, we take it as it comes and we're going to tackle it one item at a time, but keeping the eye on the other things that could come in the future, right? I mean, you know, we could pilot longer, we could pilot test longer. There's been a lot of pilot work out there already. And we just felt it was in the city's best interest to utilize the previous studies and launch us into more action-oriented solutions. This PFAS has been studied for the last 15 years. I could list 100-plus pilot tests, studies, things like that, probably 50 in Florida, right? So, you know, it's been well-studied. We understand the treatment removal processes. And you know, we think it's in the city's, let's say, most cost-efficient manner to proceed in this way. So, obviously, there's other ways to proceed. You know, we could study for two years or keep a pilot running for a longer scale. That just costs more money, right? So, we're open to doing that, but you know, is that going to get you much more? You know, I don't know. So, we understand how to remove it. We understand what it takes. We've got full-scale treatment plants operating that have these same exact processes, that have 10, 15 years of history, right, operating? So, we understand the treatment processes. Some of the things we may not understand are the chemicals coming down the pipe. But you know, we're just going to have to tackle them one at a time as they come, right? I mean, so, I mean, that's just, we can't design for something we don't know, right? I mean, so that's just how it's going to have to happen.
And I think to pick up on Ed's comment right now, I think that goes back to the whole looking at or at least analyzing it, regionalization issue. You know, if there's a way that working together with our fellow utilities, we can come up with solutions, we might be better prepared for those future chemicals as we go forward. Another question here was, have we thought out, what if there is a sinkhole? And how would this impact our wells and the process?
Right, and that kind of, that kind of situation would be catastrophic, let's just say. But we do have 10 wells, so we can shut certain ones down and they are spread across the city. But that's where the woman that spoke earlier about putting deep Florida and aquifer wells in may be a good idea, you know, to get a better-protected, more reliable source that's not as susceptible to contamination or sinkholes, right? So, you know, that is definitely a consideration.
And I think Mr. Lewis mentioned the notion of the growth in our system. So, right now, our treatment, we do about four to five million gallons per day. So right now, our treatment, we, uh, we do about four to five million gallons per day on average. And we are permitted to go up to nine million, so that's our top-end capacity. Um, envisioning if the city were to grow substantially, to get to nine million, that'd be quite, quite a fair amount of growth. Ed, is there a way to, is there some sort of like a modular increase in a system? Could you put something in today for a five-million-gallon system and later on add to it? Or is that not a possibility?
No, that's, that's exactly how we do it, because, uh, a, a lot of these PFOS treatment removal processes are modular. I, I showed you the, um, the, the pressure vessel, right? The, each one of those pressure vessels treats one point four million gallons a day. So if you need two point eight, you're getting two pressure vessels. If you need two point eight in the future, you're going to leave a spot to put two more in when you need it, right? Same thing with reverse osmosis. They come in skids. You can give them one million gallon a day skids, two million gallon a day skids, half a million gallon a day skid. So you can line them up and plan for the future, so that you put in the five MGD now? And you, and you have space to, uh, to go to the nine MGD in the future. That is one thing that is at a premium with your, uh, water plants, is there is not a lot of space there? And there's a possibility, we may have to acquire some land to, um, install some of these treatment, uh, facilities. But once we know what they are and what they look like, we'll, we'll, we'll have a better idea.
And the last question I had here was from Mr. Ismail about the refrigerator filters being, whether they're appropriate enough for us?
Yeah, I was going to let Jason answer that one.
So the refri-? No, I won't. So the refrigerator filters, there's an NSF rating on the filters? So you want to look at the NSF rating and make sure that it is compliant with the standards for removing PFOS? Or at least limiting the exposure to it?
Mr. Mustafa, to help you, so we've got the, uh, the standards right here on the screen? In terms of the, uh, NSF and ANSI Standards 53, and that would probably be applicable, I would take, I would think? Because those are GAC-type systems, I believe, right? Yep. Yep. Spargo, are we going to move on to the next? I'm sorry. Is it safe to d-? I'm sorry, whether it was safe to drink and cook with from the refrigerator filter? The? I, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the question, what I wrote down, I don't have, is it safe to? So, is it, is it, was the question, is it safe to drink and cook with? I think those have been addressed, we talked about that already several times. Sure, so actually, Ed, why don't you?
Yes, um, well, it, the fact is that your water is currently above the proposed standards for PFOS? That will be enforced in 2031, right? So, so i- i- if y- you can judge safety on educating yourself? Because I won't be able to make that assessment. But we've provided everything that we think you need here to protect yourselves, right? And make drinking the water safe. Um, and we did not see that in the sampling results I saw, so I did not see that. I, I saw non-detectable. Uh, so if you've, if you want to forward those results, yeah, we can take a look at those.
Okay. There we go. Just need to make sure, we've been doing great so far. We need to make sure we stick with it and not start, I don't want to lose control of the meeting by having questions from the, from the seat. So, um, one at a time. Everybody can talk. If you have more questions than you've already spoken, the next round, you can speak again. Um, we're going to make sure all your questions are answered, but we do want to do it in an orderly fashion. So thank you.
Can I, so Brian, correct me, are we, do we need to take a break because of the feed to synchronize? Do we need to take a break because of the feed? Are you having? Okay, we're, folks, we're going to take a, a, a break here. Uh, let's say ten minutes. Uh, so please feel free to use the restrooms, make yourselves comfortable, and we'll, we will come back.
Okay, we're ready to start our next round. If I call your name, please come sit in our on-deck chairs. Mike Pepper, Chuck Patarie, Brian Hubert, Carla Rojas, and Laura Bolser. Okay. Okay, so then we'll do. Let me call some more people, so we get it. Oh, I'm sorry, Hillary. We have Lexi Glatz, Angelina Sem- Semery, and Gil Semery. So our first speaker will be Laura Bolser.
Laura Bolser. I live in Temple Terrace for the last ten years. I want to start off by saying I appreciate seeing the city take action now. But let's be honest, that didn't happen until we made noise on social media in July. We really feel like we were left in the dark. And since your testing of the PFAS and the PFOS in March, you guys stayed quiet and didn't alert any residents or any business. The mayor went on ABC Action News in July stating, "We just learned of this." But in fact, you had those results in March. We learned about this from results buried in the report, and that was left for us to figure out. There was no alert, there was nothing letting from the city alerting any of us that we had issues in our water. And that's highly disappointing. I have various questions here that are mine as well as other people in the neighborhood, residents. But one of the things I wanted to really come out and say is, can we please hire that woman who spoke right there, who is so knowledgeable? Because I've heard more incredible information and knowledge from her than I have any one of you at these tables. She knows more than any of you. So please consult with her, please. Um, ten years of reports I saw on the website, I don't see the PFAS or PFOS listed there. And I know, I didn't know there was testing done before March of this year. So I would like to see those numbers. It's ironically, I've been living here for ten years, and four years ago came down with a god-awful autoimmune disease. So that is where a lot of my anger stems from, is I've been living with this hell for four years, unknowingly. So I want to know about these numbers. And I'm a girl who eats organic, I'm a one who buys bottled water. You know, my Doberman has had urinary tract issues. We're now thinking it's probably stones. I used to give him tap water. You know, I lost other animals. So it's so frustrating with the health problems with this water. Um, so I'm angry, I'm still angry, I'm angry with you guys for not being upfront, for not being transparent. So please consider this, Ernie. I responded to your email today about the, I asked for the reports, it was fine from January twenty twenty-one, but I would like to see all PFAS, all forever chemical testing since two thousand fifteen. Has anyone in the city government done a cost comparison between what it would take to fix our water filtration and well systems simply versus shutting down Temple Terrace water and hooking us up to either the county or city of Tampa water? Another question, for at least the short term, can we look into buying water wholesale from Tampa? I believe that was mentioned, but what kind of timeline are we looking at to do that? We all want a quick fix, and we all know there isn't a quick fix, but we really want one. Um, but we also want to see money spent in a smart manner and not just thrown away, kind of like what me, Louis, said earlier. Um, completely agree with his point as well. And that's where I'm just not convinced that CHA is the company. I don't know why you guys are so committed to them, I understand that they were doing some other work. Um, at the last council meeting, I was shut down by Gil to ask my follow-up question, which was going to be, you know, when CHA was speaking, they said, "Oh, we're gonna try to get the PFAS to the legal limit." Why just the legal limit? Legal doesn't equate healthy. The legal limit is four. The advisory health limit is point zero zero four. So why wouldn't we strive for that number instead of just striving for what's legal? Because again, we all, I'm gonna stress this and repeat myself and beat it like a dead horse. Legal does not mean healthy. It does not. Why didn't we engage counsel that represented Tampa successfully, was another question. I have other questions from other people, do you want me to stop, or can I have a few extra minutes since there's very few people here? Okay.
Lexi Glatz?
No, I'm Carla. My name is Carla Rojas Pass, and I'm a resident of Temple Terrace. And for full disclosure, I also work for the Government Accountability Office. Um, it's a federal agency that works for Congress, and I work on natural resources, including water resources, like drinking water, so this is my profession. Um, I have a sort of a, I guess like a PSA and, I don't know if you can hear me, a PSA and, um, a request and then a question. So for my PSA, I don't, this is probably not in the news, but just because of my profession, I know about this. Our Congress is currently planning on cutting, um, something that's called the State Revolving Fund, which is maybe, someone maybe didn't mention the name, but probably referred to it. It's a fund that's really important for states that, um, for water utilities in particular, because they can use it to use, um, to make water improvements. So they're planning on cutting it about ninety percent. So if you care about just in general improving your water infrastructure, which is sorely uh, needed all around this country, not just in Temple Terrace, please call your congresspeople, your senators, and tell them to keep that funding available. Um, and my request is related to, uh, the schools. I would like on the website, and perhaps also if you could work with the schools here, the public schools in Temple Terrace, River Hills, I particularly have my kids in River Hills, um, to provide transparent information about their water filtration systems. About two weeks ago, we received, at least from River Hills, I don't know about the other public schools, we received information, it was just a very general information, um, sort of a broadcast text that we received about, um, saying that they have water filtration systems, but there was no specific information about NSF, um, certificates, so nothing. I called, I emailed first, and then I called this week trying to follow up, I still haven't received anything, so um, if you have some clout or connections, that would be great if you can find more specific information to make sure that the filtration systems, um, in River Hills, in Greco, in Temple Terrace are certified to actually filter out PFAS. And then my question is to add, um, you've mentioned this a little bit, but I'm not sure, I'm assuming it's part of the scope of the study, but I'm wondering, you know, we've talked a lot about treatments, but I'm wondering if there's been conversations yet, or if you've had the opportunity to sort of talk, or what you all have been thinking about disposing of the PFAS. Obviously, that is a huge challenge, we're just talking about treatment here, and most people probably know about the treatment, but disposing of it is a big challenge because it basically can recontaminate our water. So also depending on the filtration, uh, method that you use, that sort of creates its own challenges as well. So I'm curious about what you all have been talking about, what you all are considering, and if you can also sort of a little bit of a science lesson, just explain a little bit of why that is important.
Now we have Lexi Glatz.
Hi, my name is Lexi Glatz, I've been a resident of Temple Terrace for a little bit over a year now. Um, honestly, I've never been to City Hall or anything like this in my life, this is my first time, and I hope to never have had to come to one. Um, my main concern stems from the level of transparency from the city. While I appreciate that there have recently been more thorough and active steps towards a solution, I do have a few more questions. Um, there was mention of a settlement regarding this issue, and I may have missed that information, but can you clarify when the city became involved in this settlement? And does the city's involvement in this suggest that the officials were aware of these problems before the recent reports? And if so, why weren't the residents informed earlier? Um, this whole situation has turned into a publicity nightmare for our community, and based on the last city meeting, some of the responses seemed a bit dismissive, and I found that unfortunate, so I'm very happy to see that steps today were taken, and that we have more answers. Uh, and additionally, someone asked earlier about how long the current PFAS, uh, concern has persisted. And I know that the previous regulation was set to seventy parts per trillion, but the actual number from the twenty sixteen water testing wasn't shared. So I guess that might actually help answer that person's question. And, uh, lastly, among the listed options for addressing the water quality, um, somebody up here mentioned, yes, we do have hard water, we absolutely do have hard waters, really bad. Um, the options that are listed, would that also help in softening the water? Thank you.
Angelina Semery?
Hi, my name is Angelina, um, this is also my first time at a town hall meeting, um, so I just want to thank you all for being here. Um, I can imagine your jobs are very difficult, and especially now um, with this issue, so thank you for taking our questions. Um, I've been a resident of Temple Terrace for a bit over ten years, and I went to USF before that for a number of years as well. Um, I'm a member of the Temple Terrace Community Garden, and so I appreciate the information, the helpful tip about the hose fixture, that's good to know. Um, I've always drunk tap water, I basically just drink water. I'm not a soda drinker, I'm not, I don't drink anything else but water, so I've always drunk water as long as I've lived here, um, except for maybe, you know, using a Brita filter, but as I understand, that doesn't really do much in this case. Um, I'm an extremely private person when it comes to my personal life, but there's one issue I haven't really heard brought up, um, in regards to all this, and that's about fertility, and I'm currently doing fertility treatment, IVF treatment to be precise. And I've had, um, one failed, um, sorry, trying to get emotional, um, one failed embryo transfer already, um. I know that there's no way to directly connect, you know, the PFAS level in our water with our health. And I know that PFAS comes from a lot of different, um, contexts, and I have done everything possible in the last year or two to detoxify my home and my life, and I have no non-sick pants, and I use an EWG app to scan all of my, you know, facial products and everything, and so I've been very careful, um, to try to live a clean lifestyle, and before I proceed with more very costly fertility treatment, um, when I heard about this, I went to Quest Diagnostics and got a PFAS test, which is very costly, it's three hundred fifty dollars, if anyone's concerned. Um, and that was after asking my fertility doctor to give me an order, and they said, "We can't give one to you, you have to go to a primary care specialist," which my insurance plan didn't require one, so I went ahead and found a primary care specialist after calling around to three different people, and most of the doctor's office didn't even know about what PFAS are. So I guess my concern today is more, um, well, number one is, you know, to raise the, just to help you understand, if you don't already. Um, and from my little bit of research I've done online, um, they've done studies where areas with high levels of PFAS supposedly can lower fertility as much as forty percent for some women, um, so that's, uh, trying not to be stressed about that, but that's, you know, not great news for me, um, and I will go forward, obviously, doing my best to be a mom, but if that doesn't work, um, I hope that's something that you guys take into consideration, that there are women in this community that are able to conceive, but there are those that are also, you know, kind of in an uphill battle, and this is one more thing, one more big issue that makes it difficult and very costly and possibly not possible for them. Um, I'm wondering if there will be any sort of reimbursement in the Settlement Act for just even basic testing, like the three hundred fifty dollar tests that we have to get to figure out if this is an issue for us. And as I do my research, and, you know, I know these are forever chemicals, and it says they'll be in your body forever. Obviously, people that are, you know, whether they're dealing with health issues or whatever, um, we would want to know, is there studies, are there, is there information out there that talks about some sort of detoxification option for PFAS? And a little that I found, you know, there've been studies that say that there's fiber, soluble fiber that has shown to, you know, detoxify the body, and I know that those are questions for a doctor, but again, some of the doctors I've talked to don't even know that there was a PFAS test. So is there something the city can do to put on your website and maybe consult with healthcare professionals to give us that information in one spot, so that the city can be more aware, and we can be more aware of ways that we can detoxify our bodies more? In the meantime, while we wait for the city to come up with a solution, thank you for hearing my questions.
Gil Semery?
Yeah, good evening, my name's Gil Samrani. Um, and these are actually my two daughters who live in Temple Terrace, have lived here for quite a while. Um, I have a couple of questions, but my first recommendation is that thank you for holding this meeting, but that you have more of these meetings coming up and deliver some progress reports, um, to help stamp out the rumor mill. My first question. Um, and maybe I came in late, but I haven't heard any recommendation from anybody up here in terms of whether you should or shouldn't drink the water, period. Maybe that's a legal liability, I don't know. But I think for the common person, that's probably what we would like to hear. You do it all the time whenever there is a line, a water break on Fifty-S sixth, which seems to happen like once a month. Boil your water, don't drink the water, that sort of thing. Let's do it in this case, come out and say, should you drink the water or you shouldn't, period? Um, my next question is, I didn't see anything on the general fund about health liabilities in terms of what would that fund cover in terms of compensation for the common person if they had a lawsuit, as my daughter had suggested. Is there any sort of compensation for point-of-entry systems? If we're required, and this is something that would affect your, your, um, your property value, I guess. If you're required to, um, put a point-of-entry system inside your house so that you can be as competitive with your neighbor in case you ever wanted to sell, more importantly for health reasons, but it seems to me that's what we're gonna have to do. Then shouldn't we be compensated for it? Because the city's, the city has a job, and you've spoken about that, and you're doing the job to look forward and see what the next step is to give us clean water, but right now, how do you handle right now, how do you fix right now because you're forcing everything onto us to actually fix the problem or get our own clean water? Um, that's it, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samrani. Uh, Ms. Bolser asked about the UCMR three report, and we'll post, that's the report from twenty uh, twenty thirteen to twenty fifteen, that time period, we'll post that on the website later this week. Um, she is also, uh, there was also a question about whether we had done the calculation to see if we can buy water from the county or Tampa, and maybe reading into it, I don't know which one she said specifically, but um, in fact, that's what we mentioned earlier, we've had those meetings with the city of Tampa, we had a meeting with Hillsborough County to look at that alternative as well, if we could buy water um, as a solution or part of a greater solution here to this issue. As I mentioned, Hillsborough County, the staff there is working up a potential intergovernmental bulk water rate for us to consider. But of course, we'd still have to make the connection from wherever the county, the limits, the county system to where our system starts, so it's not, it's not exactly simple, but they're very open to that, and we're looking at that as well, again, as part of this whole process. Um, question was raised as well, can we buy water temporarily from Tampa Bay Water? Uh, the issue is, buying water, you have to have the connection. It's because we're talking four million or more gallons per day, so you'd have to have a connection, that's what we're exploring in with the county, potentially the city of Tampa, um, to connect with them. Again, they have their issues, and they're looking to do solutions, but they've, they've, um, that may work for all the parties potentially. Uh, question is, why are we so committed to CHA? And so I don't want to speak to the credentials, I think they have credentials here already that stand for themselves. Uh, but if you recall, we have tried to accelerate this issue. And in accelerating this issue, we had our consultants already working on a water treatment facility master plan. Part of that was going to be some PFAS research as well. So what we've done is moved that part of the plan upfront and get them working on it as quickly as possible. In fact, they they went and did some sampling before their change order was even approved by the council at their own risk because we were really trying to move this along as quickly as possible. If we look to go with somebody else, and again, this is not, I'm not trying to denigrate what their responsibilities are and their expertise, but if we go with somebody else, that's a multi-month process to vet firms, to do it the legal way, you have to issue requests for proposals or requests for qualifications. to vet firms, to do it the legal way. You have to issue requests for proposals or requests for qualifications. Then that, that'll take a month and a month of, of, of being on the street and then interviewing firms. We just felt the community did not want that. The community wanted us to move. And that's what we tried to do here. And we have a very good firm on tap here and, and we feel that we're going to get to those solutions. Um, question was also about, uh, whether the filtration systems we're looking at were just going to get us to the legal limit or were they going to go below the legal limit? And you want to talk to that?
Yeah, I think what I did mention is, um, you know, there is a goal to get to zero, uh, on PFAS and that's, that is what I would want, but what I want doesn't matter. It's what you guys and the elected officials want here. So if you guys say the elected officials, we want zero, then we will design to zero. You know, point zero or whatever the, the lowest limit is. So that, that's, that's, you know, legally, uh, you, you, you know, this is a situation where the limit is four. Can we get to zero? Yeah, we can. Technically we can for most of the PFAS items. So that would be something that's, that's achievable, right? So, but, but there's going to come a slight extra cost with that. And it's got to be something that comes from you all, you know, do you want to, to get to zero? I, I mean, if it was me and my community, I would say yes, right? If I say yes, then that's what we'll design to, right? We work for you and we work for the city. And by the way, I want to compliment you because there was quite a few PFAS experts that live nearby here. One in the back was Dr. De Silva, a national expert who is a peer of Chandra Messori, who's the chief technical officer for CHA on this project. So if you want any, um, assessment of Dr. Messori's capabilities, just ask Dr. De Silva. They saw each other at a national conference two weeks ago. So, you know, we, we were loaded with, with, we're a firm that specialize on water quality and we do not put profits in front of people's health. You know, it's what we do here is to, to meet your needs, right, as defined by you and lead you to the water, right? So it's the decisions as to how much we treat, those are going to be yours, right? So it's not mine, you know, I'll tell you how much it costs to get to zero and I'll tell you how much it costs to get to three point nine. And then you make the decision, right? So that, that's, that's where we come from. And that's the difference in us and, you know, maybe s- some other, uh, you know, engineers. So that said, um, let's see.
Okay, uh, next question was in terms of the selection of the outside attorneys. A reference to perhaps why, why don't we use that? I'm not sure who the attorney was for Tampa, but question perhaps best suited for you.
Yeah, we chose the attorneys that we did because again, we wanted to have someone local who understands the, uh, Tampa Bay water industry and is also environmental and knows Temple Terrace. Um, and, you know, the Tampa Bay area. So we wanted to have that as our, kind of our contact. And then we wanted to also bring in specialists who are dealing with these, uh, multi-district settlement and litigation issues on a daily basis. So we wanted to go with both and that is why we chose the, uh, law firms that we did.
Okay, thank you. Um, moving on to, uh, Ms. Rojaspas and Yes, thank you. Thank you.
We, uh, engaged those law firms on, uh, July eleventh of this year, twenty twenty five.
Okay, um, Ms. Rojaspas, eh, mentioned a couple of things. Uh, she actually mentioned the state revolving fund. I did not, I was not aware of the, the potential congressional action to reduce the funding by ninety percent. Is Ms. Rojaspas still here? Um, I wanted to thank her for bringing that up because the state revolving fund, it, it provides low interest loans. They're not grants necessarily, but they're low interest loans for, for water systems. And, uh, there's, as far as I'm aware, there's not a, a ton of money in that fund to begin with. So if ninety percent of it's potentially cut, that would be a significant concern and a blow for utilities like us who are in the midst of this. So thank you for mentioning that. Um, next was a request about the schools. Uh, what we will do is, I mentioned, we have a, a task force working in this, the city task force. We're going to add this to our agenda. Uh, we will be reaching out to the school district, uh, to the superintendent's office to coordinate with them on getting some responses relative to what types of filtration systems they may have in the school district, uh, in particularly in the schools here in, in Temple Terrace. Uh, Ms. Rojaspas also mentioned the disposal of the PFAS byproduct. And that is a, that is a very real concern, uh, for some of these filtration systems. So Ed, can you elaborate please?
Yes, and that is the tail that wags the dog in this situation. And that's, uh, really somewhat of a unsolved problem. So I'll give you an example, um, uh, city of Tampa is looking at drilling a three thousand foot well and putting their ion exchange concentrate down a, a deep well uh, to put their concentrated PFAS down three thousand deep, foot deep into our lower aquifer. So uh, it's a salty aquifer and we don't use it for drinking water. So if that's, let's say that's legal. But that seems to me like recirculating the problem, right? I, that, that may be the, the lowest cost solution at the, at the moment, but one of the items that, that research is progressing on is the activated carbon, the granular activated carbon that catches the PFAS, right? The way you regenerate activated carbon is you put it in a coking oven at two thousand degrees. And it basically, uh, activated carbon is coal, right? It's a, it's a type of coal. But, um, that, that reactivates the pores and, and the carbon is able to be used again. Uh, two thousand degrees also happens to be the value that destroys PFAS. So if the research comes out and that fixing the carbon, fixing the PFAS into the activated carbon and re-cooking it at two thousand degrees destroys PFAS, then that's probably the way a lot of folks are going to go, right? It doesn't seem, it doesn't seem to me, uh, recirculating it into the environment in another location. Now, you know, deep wells, that's been done and it is allowable, but, um, that, that's just, it's a frontier that we're only beginning to, let's say, solve. We have not solved it completely yet. And so with, with PFAS, that is, all the research is going on to how to get rid of it, right? And it's hard to get rid of. It's, two thousand degrees is hot. Um, that, did that answer the question?
Thank you. Uh, moving on to Ms., I apologize, the last name, is it Blatz? Ms. Blatz? G L, Glatz? Okay. Um, so the question was, uh, when did the city be, become involved, I think, with the settlement process? And the city attorney just answered that. It was in, in July, July eleventh. Uh, question was, were we aware of this issue before the, the reports? I assume the reports are referencing the first tests that were done this year. Um, and no, uh, because if you recall, I just mentioned a presentation in, back in, under UCMR three in the twenty thirteen, twenty fifteen, when we tested, we were non-detect. So at the time, the, the report, reporting requirements were if you did not meet the minimum they wanted you to meet, or as you say, the minimum they would measure, then you come in as a non-detect. So you have no value. Um, and so that was the case there. So at that time, we were non-detect under those limits in twenty thirteen. And then, uh, in twenty twenty five here, when we tested now the new UCMR five, again, now it's four parts per trillion. That's where we now obviously have, have evidence that we have uh, PFAS at a level that would not be compliant with the future law in twenty thirty one. Uh, in terms of the actual, what was the actual number for the twenty thirteen PFAS, PFOA, P, uh, PFOA, PFOS number? Again, it was non-detect. So again, we'll go back, but I believe what was submitted back in twenty thirteen uh, in that twenty thirteen fifteen period was just non-detect. So it was lower than the minimum. So the, the water systems don't report on that if it's lower than the minimum, but we'll get, we'll, we'll see what information's available. And then, uh, question about would treatment options help in softening water? I believe Ed said that there was some, some of that?
Yes, there, there is. And it's the reverse osmosis, the membrane technology can also soften the water as well. So, uh, it's, it can soften the water and remove PFAS in one swoop. So uh, that's, that's a technology we'll be looking at heavily. The city does soften, uh, water through lime softening, but, um, uh, the, the membrane softening would probably be a more effective measure.
Uh, Ms. Samreney's comments, um, yeah, again, I'm, I'm sorry. That was, that was, I was, it was hard, I'm sure, for you to say that out here in public. So thank you for having the courage to talk about that issue. Um, so in terms of fertility health concerns, I don't know if anyone on the CHA team can allude to some studies or perhaps direct to some studies that might be out there.
There's, there's not a good answer that I can give you from that, but I, I, I feel your pain and, you know, I, I, I share it. It's you know, watching that movie, I, I was shocked to see that this was like ten or fifteen years ago. I thought we had kind of passed that time that, that, that we were doing this to our environment, right? And if you're, if you're mad, uh, get mad at the, at the process that allowed this chemical to not only be manufactured, that's, that's harmful to humans in such small quantities, right? But, but then to discharge it into our environment, right? The city didn't do that. The city didn't make it. It's, it's, if, if, you know, direct your anger to stop the production of PFAS, my God, we're still making it, right? So if you want to get angry and do something, then get with your elected officials and talk to them about, you know, taking steps to, to control the discharge of this, so, uh, and eliminate it, you know, so and any other threats that are similar to this, right? We, you are here tonight because you've had enough, right? This is not something that's acceptable, right? And it, and it shouldn't be acceptable. You know, we should not be poisoning our own drinking water as human beings, right? That just doesn't make sense in any form or fashion. And, and we need to stop it. That, that's the problem here.
Ed, this next question again, uh, I'm not sure if it's something we can answer here. Um, but there is a, a, a good, um, I think another good question here, which is maybe we can reach out to, um, I mean, we're fortunate, we have USF Health right in our backyard here, the medical school. So we might be able to reach out. The question was, are there any detoxification studies out there that, um, have been proven sound enough to help detox the body? Um, we'll look at that. We'll reach out to, uh, like I said, we have contacts in some of the, the regional medical facilities and see if we can find out some information. And if we do, we'll make that information available on the city's website. And then the other question was, uh, is there a reimbursement potentially, I guess, in this, and perhaps on the settlement agreement for testing for personal tests? Um, and I'm not sure if the city attorney can address that.
Certainly not that I'm aware of in the settlements that we're in. Again, these settlements are geared toward water providers, not so much individuals. That's not to say there might not be something out there. I can at least check with our outside counsel, who are the specialists, to see if they know of anything out there. Otherwise, um, I'm not aware of it. Sorry.
I have another one. Um, question on, uh, health liability for compensation for the common person. I think it's kind of in line with that. So if you could, when you reach, reach out to the attorney, perhaps ask about the same question. Um, and the question again that, uh, Mr. Samreney mentioned was, you know, again, should you or should you not drink the water? I think Ed's tried to address this here today. Um, want to try again?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take one last shot at it. I, I, I don't have, uh, I, I don't know it yet, but a PFAS issue with my public supply, but I put filters on my refrigerator, I put them on my hose, I put them on my, the water I drink and my pets drink, you know, so I just do it as a precaution. And, you know, that's, that's just, that's just my choice, right? So, uh, you know, we provided you the information. We can lead you to water. We can't make you drink, right? So, or, you know. Yeah, and in fact, on their website, the EPA's website, they have a lot of the information that, you know, that for those point of use filters. So there's your answer right there. So, so yeah, they, they have point of use filtration information on the, on the EPA's website as far as recommendations, certifications and things like that. I think I posted the link on my, on my slide there, but yes, they, you know, they are, they are posting that information to try to, to try, try to help people facing this situation. So
So if, if I could, maybe I could add to that a little bit. So I, I think the, the, the tricky part here is that today, today, and I, I, I know it was said here before, regulations are one thing, health is another. I absolutely get that. I'm not trying to discount that. All I'm saying is that today, the system, the city's water, like Tampa's water, Tampa Bay water, so they, they meet the current drinking water systems and regulations that are in place today. The EPA has realized that this issue over, apparently if you look back since twenty thirteen to now, their science has evolved, their understanding has evolved on this issue. So now they're, they're, they're implementing enforceable levels, which would lead to your assumption, basically, okay, the water needs to be addressed because now they're saying in the future, we're going to have enforceable levels, we're going to have regulations now. It's not just an advisory, there can be regulations. But at the same time, they're also saying, we understand that this will take some time. Because if you, if we all remember, there's nearly seven thousand systems like ours right now in the same situation as ours across the country. So they're, recognize it's going to take some time. So in that time period, again, I don't, I don't want to take away from anybody's concern. I think you have to make individual decisions based on your, your, your tolerance for how you feel about, you know, this issue. Um, but, but again, they understand, they're not saying immediately shut down all these, you know, seven thousand drinking water systems. That's not what the EPA is saying. They're saying, we want you to get to a certain place. That's what we're trying to do. That's why we're here this evening to understand this issue, better inform our residents about this issue with a full intent of getting to that place. That's our goal. We want to get there. But the, I think the EPA recognizes that's not going to happen for, again, for all these systems, one day to the next, that it can't. So I, I, I'm sorry if that answer isn't what you, you know, what you're looking for, but I think it's the best one I can give you right now. All I can say, sir, is that again, you got to base it on your own decision. Water meets the regulations that are in place across the state right now. That's what I can tell you. Well, bottled water is not regulated for PFAS, by the way. So just keep that in mind as well and, and can't miss notice it.
We're ready for our next round of speakers. Uh, Bridget Morello. Cleopatra Doyle. Gary Tub. Chris Bardwin. Phil Channel. Bridget Morello.
Hi, I'm Bridget Morello. I've lived in Temple Terrace almost forty years. I am a professional engineer. I've been dealing with groundwater and drinking water assessment and remediation for thirty, thirty-six years approximately. Um, thank you for doing this. I appreciate it. There is, uh, no good answers. Not everybody's going to hear what they want to hear tonight. I've been at these presentations for various cities across the country, naval installations, air force installations, et cetera. We are in a world where PFAS regulations, testing methods, cleanup methods, everything is evolving. There is no holy grail. We're still trying to figure it all out. And we're working for drinking water facilities, commercial clients that have the same issues with PFAS. And I want you to understand that the city is not the enemy here. It is also a victim of PFAS getting into the drinking water supply. And by them being here and engaging CHA, they are attempting to make it right and get it improved and help our drinking water. We have to give recognition for that and not undermine the process by splitting hairs for not hearing an answer to every question that we ask because frankly, they don't have the answers. EPA doesn't have the answers. The FDP, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, doesn't have the answers. So we're all working together to try and get to those answers. And there's probably at the end of the day going to be a combination of things that you heard here tonight as the resolution. One treatment train isn't going to solve our problem. It's going to be a combination of looking at the, the ten wells we have. Are they adequate? Are they all impacted? Is it just a few of them impacted? Could we treat the Are they all impacted? Is it just a few of them impacted? Could we treat the wells? Could we, as opposed to treating all the water from one of the treatment plants? Could we combine the flow from the treatment plants, um, and have one treatment system? You know, aside from looking at water from other sources, Tampa Bay water is impacted with PFAS. City of Tampa water is impacted with PFAS. Hillsborough County water is impacted with PFAS. Do we want their water? It's just going to add to the problem. So there, there could be a combination of things that we have to look at from source water protection, our well field, deeper wells, like, um, the other engineer said, to, to other various things, from pilot testing and developing a treatment system. And we are exposed to PFAS in everything we do, everywhere we do, every product we use, um, it has PFAS in it. And so it's not just our drinking water that is posing an exposure risk to us. And I liken this to 25-plus years ago, hair on fire because there was a chemical called 1-4-dioxane in the water. Today, we still have no maximum contaminant level federally for 1-4-dioxane. This could, same thing could happen for PFAS. And yet, hair on fire because there are forever chemicals in there, as yet to be, not be certified, but there's studies that are showing what they could affect in our bodies. And, you know, the, the science on that is still evolving. So, you know, what we can do is limited and we need to validate the process, the steps that are happening. Frankly, the settlement money is probably going to be a pittance, because our concentrations in the City of Temple Terrace water are so low compared to things I saw, I've seen across the country. Concentrations a thousand parts per trillion or higher, tens of thousands of concentrations of PPT or higher are what are posing hair-on-fire concerns. The 19, 10, 11 PPT that we're seeing, yes, it may be three or four or five times the MCL, but it's such a small concentration compared to others across this country that are dealing with it on a much more severe basis. Bottled water is not PFAS-free. Don't fool yourself, okay? And point-of-use or point-of-entry treatment systems are only effective if you're actually having a service and re, um, maintaining the filtration or whatever's involved in those systems and testing the water to prove that it's actually working. So if you're not taking samples of your water before and after it's being treated, how do you know it's working? You're taking some salesperson's, um, uh, information for that. As far as the pilot testing, I want to validate, short-term pilot tests do work. We do them all the time. That's how I design systems and have for many, many years. And we do know enough about usage rates for the media, the carbon, the, um, and, and also for the disposal options, which are very limited for the brine from an RO system. Nobody's got a solution for that. I'm working on several systems right now where we can't get rid of the waste. So it, and solution isn't necessarily recirculation or heating, regenerating the carbon, because that just leads to an air problem. So there's a lot of factors that come into play. And I just want to make sure y'all take into consideration that the city's trying to do something about it. Let's not lose sight of that.
Thank you, Mr. Lord.
And we don't have all the answers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Cleopatra Doyle.
All right, I think most of my questions have already been answered. I appreciate all the information. And I especially appreciate the people who, um, have professional knowledge in this field that have been coming up to help clarify some of what we're already hearing. And I appreciate the help, the, the information you guys are giving us in, um, trying to solve this problem. I understand the frustrations of wanting it fixed now, um, but also wanting to do it right and knowing that we need to take the time. I guess, again, most of my questions were answered. So I think she just kind of clarified my one question that I had left, mainly that you had said earlier, I think that the, all the other Tampa Bay area, their levels, are they above? What, are they also high like ours? Or are they better than ours? Because some people are saying use their water. To me, that doesn't make sense if they have bad levels as well. Um, and then as a school teacher here in Temple Terrace, at a school here in Temple Terrace, I had the same concern with the drinking water at school. I went to school thinking, oh, I'll just get their water. And then I realized that's probably not going to help me at all. Um, and either the administration is, um, unaware or not sure what to do and so not really doing anything. Um, I'm not sure who's responsible for, for that. And I realize that that could be costly for the schools too, but it would be nice to have, um, some information for the parents and teachers that work there, so that we can make informed decisions.
Gary Tub.
Just because you have a sample size of three people that are in their eighties, doesn't mean that that's a good method of identifying the accuracy, validity of data. So I think there are two things I would like to ask of, uh, of the, uh, City of Temple Terrace. And it would, uh, the first is, uh, on the website for Temple Terrace, would you put a summary of, uh, this meeting tonight? The second thing would be, uh, you could, you could call it, status update on PFAS. The second thing would be, would you, uh, provide, uh, schedule for meetings in the future? Now, I have one particular interest. And, uh, it's the sampling protocol that you're using for the collection of data. And whether it's repeated measures, whether it is, take one cup, what temperature did you get it at, all of the details. I taught statistics for 19 years at university. And those are important things, but you have to, of course, recognize that it's an additional cause and it may be unnecessary. So would you publish the protocol? Because I'm sure EPA has a protocol for it. And that's it.
Is that, are you Chris?
I've worked in Temple Terrace for 39 years, and I think there's probably more professional engineers in this building tonight than in any other building in Temple Terrace history. I am also a PE. Um, normally everybody from Jason coming this way knocks it out of the park. You walk on water and don't get the bottoms of your feet wet. But you had testing in March, you had test, more testing in May. And then Paul really didn't get kicked off until about July. That kind of disappointed me, the way it was handled. I thought there could have been a little bit more information upfront. One question I had, and if I understood this correctly, the, the pilot plant will precede some of the temporary, I'll call it mitigation efforts or, I don't know, reduction efforts in PFAS. And you alluded to the fact that there was lead times on some equipment. I've been out of the game for about 10 years. I'll be honest with you. I had to look up PFAS when I got my water report, because I didn't know what it meant. But I did some internet, you know, searching like all retired people do. And there is at least one company that has a two, two to three week lead time as of May of this year on getting a plant, they sent a plant to Calistol-Montana, 2.88 MGD, and it was a temporary plant. So I, I think some of the lead times are shorter than either you are under the impression or there might be stuff out there. Tampa connects, or connects, interconnects with other, uh, entities. Uh, City of Tampa has a 16-inch water main on Fowler Avenue at 46th Street. They have lower PFAS levels than we do here in Temple Terrace. When you go to the county, you're going to be dealing with wells. Each well's going to have a different level of PFAS. Each plant's going to be having a different level of PFAS. I worked for Tampa for over 30 years. I'm not married to them. What I do know is you've got consistent water over there. As an example, on 52nd Street, between, uh, White Way and Fowler, you've got a six-inch City of Tampa line on the west side of the street and a six-inch Temple Terrace line on the east side of the street. Something like that. There's got to be a way to make an interconnect easy and quick. And we used to do them all the time when I was with the City of Tampa. Um, that's all. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, Jeannie, is that the end of this group?
Wait, is Phil Channel here?
Sorry. My name is Phil Chanel. I have lived in the Tampa area 86 years. I attended elementary school at what is now the Woodmont Clubhouse, when this area was mostly orange groves and dairy farms. But I, when I got married, I wanted to have a farm, so I moved out into the rural area. And I drank well water for 50 years. Now, as to my background, um, I had the incentive to look into contaminants, because at 35 years old, I was told I had eight months to live because I had teratoma and brinal carcinoma cancer. And I was lucky enough to get some experimental chemotherapy, and that was 50 years ago. So, um, I made it a point in my life to find out about contaminants. And as a result, I was the manager for safety and industrial health for a local company. And what I found out was that there are contaminants that are carcinogens in this world that you will be exposed to. Now, the EPA has done a tremendous job in eliminating some of those exposures. I can remember back in the seventies, the big thing was asbestos. And, uh, the, the exposure to asbestos at that time, people didn't realize the greatest exposure you had was at intersections, because all the brake drums were made of asbestos. And so if you stopped at a red light, you were exposed to asbestos fibers above the government sanctioned exposure level. Now, I have not heard PFAS and PFAS having an exposure level. And that will be coming in the future. We know that they have set a level of four parts per trillion. But that doesn't equate directly to what you can be exposed to without being expecting to be damaging to your body. Now, I don't know whether it is a neurological turn, uh, toxin, or whether it's a carcinogen. I think that no one really does. But the EPA has said that this is a contaminant. And we will, with time, with research, with the science, and with good government practices, like we're seeing here, we will see the time when there will be a permissible exposure level telling you that you can drink these substances in your water for over a eight-hour time or a 24-hour time and not expect to have any ill effects. Periclesius was the first, like, industrial hygienist way back in 800 AD. And he made the proclamation, all things are toxic. It depends on the concentration, the route of exposure, whether you ingest it, absorb it, are exposed to it through radiation, even something as pure water. If you try to breathe it, it will kill you. So everything in this world is a toxin. It's just the degree that you're exposed to it. And to some extent, the DNA of your body. One of my employees was taking a welding test. And he did all the things that you're supposed to do when you weld. Now, he was, he was welding on stainless steel, which is a, a highly toxic fume. And, and to, to let you know what a real fume is, a fume is a ma, a metal that has heated up to the point to where it will be inje, in, inhaled. And he was predisposed by his DNA that if he was ever exposed to that chromium that is in the stainless steel, that he would almost die. And he almost did, okay? So it's, it's, there's so many facets that are being looked at here. Not only your own personal DNA, but the concentration that you're, you're at. And it is, and, and, and if you drink the bottled water, it's all, if you remember that, the map, it's all the blue area, and that's where all the water's coming from anyway. But in time, this will be an issue just as asbestos is. You hardly hear about it. But in time, this will be taken care of because of people like you that are here doing the work that you're doing.
Thank, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Okay, to, just working on the last group then here that spoke. Um, Ms. Doyle asked if there are other Tampa Bay water suppliers above, uh, the 2031 levels. In fact, as I've been mentioning, so this, Tampa Bay water, the City of Tampa, um, they are all looking at treatment solutions, because they have portions of their system at least that have rates that are currently above the four parts per trillion. So they're, they're looking at that as well. Um, and that leads me to another question about why, why would we connect with somebody who has the issue? Uh, again, we're, as we mentioned there, uh, these other communities, these other entities, I should say, they're looking at treatment just like we're looking at treatment. So there may be ways, again, regionalizing this, where you can, you can address the issue, get it down by, you know, using the different levels of water and different systems. And so there's, these are the kind of things that they're going to be looking at as they, as they move forward. Um, there was also a request for information, I think, for parents and teachers at schools on the water issue. So as I mentioned earlier, we'll be reaching out to the superintendent of schools and their, and their office to see if we can get some of that information out. Uh, I also know we have private schools in this area, so whatever comes from that, we'll try to have that replicated for the private schools that are in the Temple Terrace zone. Um, yes, the, yeah, sorry, when I, in my mind, when I, when I meant, I meant all the schools that we, that are inside. Thank you. Um, Mr. Tub asked if we would put out a summary of this meeting on the website. In fact, we'll, we'll do one better. This recording, uh, is going to be, in posterity, will be on, on, on YouTube. Um, the presentations themselves will be put on the city's website. So all the presentations you saw this evening, they'll be there as well, um, um, this week. Uh, question about would you provide schedule for meetings in the future? We will, once we have meetings scheduled in this. Again, this is pretty early on right now in this process, but as we get more information, we'll, we'll make that information known to the community, uh, and whether it be a council, some other forum, we'll make sure that, that word gets out. Um, uh, would we post, can we publish the EPA sampling protocol? I assume there is an EPA sampling protocol, correct? Yep, yep. So we will, uh, we'll look to get that made available as well. Um, Mr. Barkwin, uh, when he expressed disappointment in how the matter was handled initially, I, I, I don't disagree. We can do better. We're going to do better. Uh, we're learning about this issue along with you. Like, I'm a Temple Terrace resident myself. I drink the water. I know folks that are drinking bottled water here in my house. I drink from the tap. My whole family does. So we're learning about this as we go forward. Um, and we're going to try and, and do better. And I believe we are where we're doing better now and getting the word out and, uh, trying to get results. Um, uh, it was also mentioned about one company have a two to three week lead time. So I'm sure you took notes of that, uh, in terms of a, an interim potential solution. Uh, Mr. Barkwin also mentioned how Tampa has consistent water and recommended us. So we are, like I said, we've, we've had those conversations with Tampa. Uh, they're working, or will be working with our staff to, uh, look at their infrastructure and look at where the nearest connection point could be. Again, I don't want to mislead anybody, this is going to happen, or necessarily today or tomorrow, because again, they have lots of work to do on their end, as we would have to do to make something like that happen. But that is the direction that we are proceeding at the moment. Um, and then, uh, Mr. Chanel had asked about whether there was an exposure level for PFAS designated yet? And I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think the, the woman in the back kind of summarized it. Um, I think there's still work being done, and I, I don't think they really know the, the limits. Um, I think there's still work being done, and I, I don't think they really know the, the limits. There is, there's been blood tests. There has been epidemiological studies. And, and you just have to take a look at those and, and go from there. There's also organizations that are, that are helping, uh, you know, uh, some of the higher concentration, um, PFAS utilities around the country, and some of those folks may, may have some better ideas on that. But, um, that, I, I think, I think she put it succinctly, though. It's, it's, it's evolving. It's brand new. We're, we're still understanding it. But, um, we certainly know how to get it out of the water, and we're going to start there.
Um, Ms. Barlow, is, are we, any more speakers?
We have four speakers left.
Okay.
If anybody else would like to speak, please, now's your chance. Get a form, submit it. Otherwise, we only have four remaining speakers. Uh, David Redding. Tara McDaniel. Karen McColsky. And Carol Dell. Tara, yes, Tara McDaniel.
I wanted this to be on record, that this town hall wasn't the council's doing. It was a few of us sitting in this audience that requested this meeting. Matter of fact, the mayor said nay to the town hall. We know there are PFAS everywhere. We've heard that numerous times tonight. But we choose what we put in our body and what we purchase. Yes, I've got it on right now. Um, but no, it would not be safe to drink or use in my household, according to my research. My children will not be, as much as I can avoid it. I also have a question about Gen X were detected and reported on our water report that was mailed out right here, four-point-four. But on the slide you showed earlier, it showed non-detected. Why was that? I've had many residents reach out to me personally that have called the city and was told there was no issue with the water. Any explanation with that? And that's been recent. What is the frequency of testing moving forward? And these are questions that I've been asked to ask. How will you keep the city informed moving forward? There, not everybody has the internet. Not everybody has Facebook, those types of things. And then the questions that are left unanswered, how will they be answered after this night? Um, and I want those questions to be answered. Those voices need to be heard, and their questions need to be validated or answered. And we need to hold them accountable for those answers if you didn't receive them. And another thing I think that's positive here, I hope that this situation that we're dealing with and many other issues will create a presence at the council meeting. I've been at the last two. The last one was pretty puny. And that's sad. Our residents need to be there. This is not our only issue. We have people working for us. We need to work for them as well. But we also have to be there to support them if they're going to support us. So I would like to see more presence at the meetings and be a voice for this and many other items of our city. We are the voice of the city. And, um, we need to hold the city accountable. They need to hold us accountable and other people that are involved. It's the only thing.
Karen McColsky?
Uh, thank you so much for staying so late. And, um, there were some questions that I would also like to, uh, answer. So, um, the, uh, GAC, which is the Gran, Granual Activated Charcoal, like a Brita filter, um, those do remove ninety-eight-point-six percent. So if you have four percent, four PPT, you remove that, then it will. So you can make personal choices to have than clear water. I've been using Brita filters for probably twenty years, whenever they came out, uh, forever. Um, the other is, uh, somebody made a comment about CHA or CHS. I'm sorry, I don't know your, your acronyms, um, if we should go with them. I think this gentleman is extremely ethical. He says we should not do a direct inject down below our aquifer because it will just recycle into the environment. Yes, of course, baking it at two thousand will then put it into thing, but then you can then find a way. But if this gentleman realizes putting it below our aquifer is going to put it back into it, that is a trusted man. That is, and he said it on TV. So that says something about him and says something about the city council, Mr. Bayer, whoever found him and hired him. So I think we really should consider that. Um, sorry, I got a little passionate there. Um, then the other is, uh, research for removal, detection, and health effects. This is all in the, it's in the media now. Please, please, don't go on Google or on Yahoo and search "how to detoxify my body." You're going to get some wellness. You're going to get some, I'm sorry, scam. If it is not a published article legitimate on NIH and on something, some trusted medical publication, don't trust it. Don't buy the thirty-dollar Brita filter. Um, and then the other is the FDA does not regulate this. Bottled water does not have a requirement. Foods do not have a requirement. You can go on the EP, the FDA, EPA will link you to foods. They will let you know that a lot of seafood coming from China is so beyond our levels. So you really need to see what you're ingesting. This is Teflon. It's in so much stuff. Um, the other thing that I was going to say. You guys are doing a great job. I think that this is immensely, uh, uh, for, uh, for the community that you are here this late and that you are being as transparent as possible. And Mr. Bayer saying, hey, we will get this for you. They are going to get this for us. I think we need to have trust and appreciation at nine-thirty at night. And I'm speaking because I am so proud to be in the City of Temple Terrace.
Carol Dell?
People, but it was about the bottled water. The fact that the bottled water isn't like, you know, unicorns and rainbows and cotton candy. I think there's even a problem with the plastic that holds the bottled water. So, so to accuse the people sitting up here of having bottled water instead of tap water, I don't, I don't even know where that was going. But anyway, I just want to say, I guess what I'm figuring out now is a Brita filter is the most economical and the best way to go. That's it. Thank you.
Did, David, David Redding, did he ever return? No. All right, we are out of speaker forms.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Barlow. So to address, uh, the last few speakers, um, uh, Ms. McDaniel mentioned the Gen X chemicals and it looks like we're going to check the data, the data set again, just double-check that, um, to make sure. And if, and we will publish on the city's website, uh, that, that information. Um, uh, was comment made about many residents have been told by the city there's no issue with the water. It was all those conversations. So all I can say is, uh, again, I'm not sure if they were responding to the fact that today it meets the regulations, like we were talking about it here. Um, obviously, we're all here, so we realize there's an issue, and we're going to try and work on it. Um, no, I understand. I appreciate that. Uh, as to testing going forward, yes, there will be testing, quarterly testing. We did the, uh, we did a quarterly test already last July thirtieth. We're waiting on those results. We're going to continue to do a test every quarter going forward. Ed, is there any additional testing that will be done?
Just the pilot testing. So we will be testing, uh, the, the feedwaters to the pilot, uh, plant and also the effluent waters to, to judge the efficiency of the PFOS removal.
And the question about how will, um, questions that weren't necessarily answered here be answered in the future? So, uh, I think we're going to do broad category questions. We'll probably put those answers on the city's that water questions page. That might be answers that everybody will be interested in. People that put in, um, uh, speaker cards here this evening, if you put in your email and you had a question that perhaps we didn't answer, um, we will try and get that answer back to you if we can find that answer in the next, you know, several days. Uh, but check out the city's website, please, going forward. If you scanned that QR code earlier, again, if you think of something later on this evening when you leave or tomorrow and you, you want to ask that question, it will be directed to us. And, uh, moving on, uh, I appreciate Ms. McColsky's, uh, comments. Uh, don't have questions there. Ms. Dunn, a big advocate apparently for Brita filters. So, uh, thank you, Ms. Dunn, for that. Um, that, that marks, I think, unless somebody else wants to speak, that marks the, yes? Yes, we're going to get to those. So I think right now, um, we're, this is the, uh, we're, we've concluded the, the speakers who are here. We know that people have been watching online, and we're going to take a break here so we can basically collect all their questions and their comments. And then we'll try and address those in front of the cameras for the folks at home, um, in case there are questions that weren't already answered by the folks here today. So, uh, if you want to stay, you can. If you don't want to stay, thank you very much for having come out tonight, and we look forward to seeing you in the future. Thank you. Yeah, we're going to, yeah, we're going to have to take a break as we have to go through the, the questions and make sure we understand what all those questions are. Sticking it out with all of us. So we've had, it looks like we have four questions again, these were ones that apparently were not answered by, not asked by anybody here, so they weren't repeats from online. So it looks like, first question is, what are the levels in the river water that Tampa uses for their drinking water versus our wells? So at this point, I'm not sure if we have that data here. We don't have that data, and I'm not sure if they parse that data down in terms of exactly where in the river it comes from, but we can, we can look at that and try and get that information up on the city's website as well. Next question was, how much PFAS is in the plastic bottled water at the local grocery store, and how varied is it? Maybe, Ed, you want to, probably, I don't know what the answer to that would be.
Yeah, I don't know the answer. I haven't really looked at bottling water results. I heard somebody threw out a number, but I would just be throwing, re-throwing that number out. So I think it's something that we could research and get it, get an answer for the next meeting, for the meeting summary.
Thank you. And then, will this entire town hall meeting be accessible later via some platform? It will, so this meeting will be on YouTube in the archive, and if you go to the City of Temple Terrace section on YouTube, you'll see it there, along with our other council meetings, for example. Can we budget a certain amount of testing with an independent lab and offer those test kits to residents who have concerns? So we can look at that, I'm not sure what that would entail, but it's a question I've just been talking with Ed about that, too. We can, we can have our task force look at that and what that might mean, so we will work on that also. That is the extent of the questions for this evening. If the council has any closing remarks?
Well, I just want to thank everybody for coming out. These are good questions, and thank you very much. We're committed to doing whatever we need to, as quickly as we can, as efficiently as we can, and, you know, we're all the same boat, so we're going to do everything to make it right for everybody. But again, those who did come out, those who watched and submitted questions, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. The same for me. Thank you to everybody that came out. This is an issue, obviously, that we take very seriously. Thank you to our city staff. I hope you get a sense of how hard they've worked in the last month or so. It's been amazing, from at least my perspective on council, to watch how hard they've worked, and met with the different groups on all this, and continue to work hard for all of us citizens. The other thing is, if people want to contact at least me, my email address, city email address is on the website, go to, click on my name, and my cell number's on there, too. I've invited a lot of people, if you want to talk just with me, because we can, as a council, violate sunshine, but you can get my number and everything through the city's website. By the way, thank you for coming out and all this late. Thank you to consultants down there, good answers, good work. Thank you.
Good evening. I also want to thank all of you who came out this evening and also watched it online. I do want to say that as a councilperson and as a resident of the city, we're taking this very seriously. We, we live here with you. There's not a special water pipe for city council members. We all drink the exact same water, and no, I don't drink bottled water at home, I drink regular water. I happened to not bring myself any water tonight. So, it's very, it's an important issue to us, as well as important to this, to the community, and we are hearing you, we are listening to you. For the questions that may have come up earlier, when did you know about this? I learned about the test results exactly when everybody else in the community learned. I read the letter. I want to assure you that whether someone had brought this up or not, I was bringing this up at the council meeting, first council meeting that came after we received the results. So again, I live here, I drink the water, I water my organic garden, I, you know, feed my children, I, we do all of the same things you do. So we are looking at the information that we'll get from our testing and consultants. We're looking at the results that we need in order to establish the best method to address the issue. But I want you to know that we are just as invested in this as any of you in the community are. So thank you, and reminder that we cannot respond on Facebook or social media to specific questions. The best I can say is, please come to the meeting, or please call me, or please email. So, want to reiterate that. Please contact a council member directly, and we can have any conversation that you would like to have and answer your questions. We just can't do it on social media. So, thank you all.
There you go. I, too, would like to thank everybody who came out. I know most of them have left at this point, but we are recording it. So, we had a very good turnout tonight. A lot of very good questions were raised, and a lot of good answers, responses were given. I do want to thank our consultant team, I think we did a very good job tonight, did a good job at the council meeting, the last meeting. I want to thank the council for your participation. In particular, I want to thank the employees, who I know are going on 14, 15 hours at this point of being at work. I know how hard our team members have worked on making this possible, and making it go smoothly, and I know that tomorrow you're back at it again. And so, for all of you in the back, I sincerely appreciate all the work that you put in, I appreciate you sticking it out with us tonight. Mr. B., I don't know what to say, I know that you probably haven't had a break in quite some time now about this issue and keeping all the other things going in the city. Mr. Warrenfeld, I know it's been the year of utilities between broken pipes and construction and stormwater projects, and so, thank you for all that you and your team do. Again, thank you for the public in particular for coming out, and we will stand adjourned.